Good evening, welcome to the August 1st meeting of the Yarmouth Board of Selectmen, or Select Board at your preference. This is a hybrid meeting which requires that the following notice be read into the record. This is the formally advised as required by General Laws, Chapter 30A, Sections 18 through 25 in pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, signed into law on June 16, 2021, as extended by Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023. The Yarmouth Board of Selectmen will hold a public meeting on Tuesday, August 1st, 2023, at 6:00 PM in the hearing room, Yarmouth Town Hall, 1146 through 28 South Yarmouth, Mass. The public is welcome to attend either in person or via the alternative public access provided below. The Zoom information is on the website, shows you how to link in by computer or telephone. So that's pretty much it for the notice, so please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. The first item on the agenda is announcements. Do we have any announcements?
Not that I'm aware of, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. And we'll go to public comment then. Anybody want to be recognized for purposes of public comment? I see a hand.
Gary Ellis.
I can't see your face behind the hand, but I see a hand.
It's Gary.
Is it Gary Ellis? Good evening.
How are you?
Good.
Are you all? So I am here, as you know, I'm chairman of CPA in the town of Yarmouth. So I have worked with the Recreation Commission and Dorcas and Debbie for years. I just wanted to make my comments about the fact she's been a great representative to our committee, shows up all the time. She is also our liaison with the Housing Committee, and she attends all the meetings, reports back to us. And I want to say she was a great help in getting that splash pad approved, because it was kind of back and forth over the splash pad. But then she was insistent upon having the accessibility feature added in redoing the playground. She was big on that, always has been, and that's part of the reason it got done with our committee. And I would tell all of you, if you haven't been there, my grandkids are there today. It is a great asset to the town, and you guys should all be proud of it. I am, and I know Debbie is. It is just done at the right time, done on time, and on budget. So I wanted to say that, I just want to say Debbie was a big part of that. I appreciate her being on our committee. She's been a great asset to us from the recreation, and that was, those were my two comments. I wanted to support Debbie. Hopefully she can remain as a member from the Recreation Commission, because she's been an asset to us. But also, I just want to commend everybody here as far as getting that splash pad done. Great asset to the town, and if you haven't been there, go see it. See all the kids there and laughing and playing, it's just wonderful. Okay, thank you all, have a good night.
Thank you, Gary. Anyone else?
Yes, sir.
Elvia Rodriguez, 45 Nautica Lane in South Yarmouth. I have several questions for the Board of Selectmen regarding the development of 19 acres off of Forest Road. Question one is, on April 27th, Mr. Norman Holcomb submitted a letter requesting a meeting of the Select Board in public to discuss crucial issues regarding the legality of transferring this property to the Yarmouth Housing Authority. After three months, no meeting has been scheduled, and the Selectmen have refused to answer Mr. Holcomb's subsequent correspondence as to the findings of his inquiries. Why are the Selectmen stonewalling Mr. Holcomb, and by association, the residents of Yarmouth? That's my question.
Do you expect me to get into some kind of a dialogue with you?
No, I'm asking a question.
If you do, that's not going to happen. Your public comment is for you to make comments to address the board.
No, I have a right to ask a question about something that's in...
Are you listening? Or do you just want to talk?
You're not listening. You're not listening. I want an answer to that question.
Well, you're not going to get one, because I just told you, this is not a Q&amp;A period, it's for you to make public comment.
It's on the agenda, I have a right to ask a question. So you are refusing to answer that question?
Are you done?
No, I'm going to ask a question.
Continue, please.
I'm going to, I'm going to continue. In 2023, the housing production plan that is being presented for your approval tonight lists the Forest Road project as the highest priority for development. On page 71, the property is surreptically listed as public land, West Yarmouth rental. In the initial version of the plan, it was listed as Yarmouth Housing Authority, Forest Road. The name change is an obvious attempt to hide what the town is promoting. This is unbecoming of a municipality. Must I remind the Selectmen that in 2011, the residents of Yarmouth voted by an overwhelming majority against the development of this property by taking, buying, or trading land with the Yarmouth Housing Authority? Two subsequent articles in 2012 and 2013 were also passed to prevent this development. Page 49 of the plan discusses the history of Forest Road and leaves all of that out of their, of a plan, does not discuss that whatsoever. This is not only dishonest, it is pure subterfuge. Instead of complying with the clear mandate from the public, the town is instead promoting a housing development that will increase nitrogen levels in our wells and estuaries, while also flooding a neighborhood. After recently appropriating $207 billion for Phase 1 of the wastewater treatment project to reduce nitrogen in our wells and estuaries, it is sheer hypocrisy to now offer a plan to increase nitrogen levels in the most damaging of localities. You must reject the housing production plan as presented. In summary, the Yarmouth Housing Authority has plans to sell this property to a developer. They care little about destroying the health of a community, and they have prepared to , for a request of a proposal to do this. Like Pontius Pilate, they are washing their hands of this, and you know the rest of the story. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? We have somebody up on the screen.
It's Vita.
Who is it?
Vita Morris.
Where is Vita?
Hello, I'm here, okay?
Okay.
I just, I don't want to make a comment now, but I just don't want you to forget when you get to the Jamaica Festival, the public will be invited to make comments or ask questions, am I correct?
No, you're not correct on that. That's a licensing matter, it's not a public, it's not for public input.
I thought you've done that before, I guess maybe I was mistaken, in which case I will make the comment right now, if that's not...
No, go ahead, that's appropriate.
What do you mean, it's appropriate? In other words, you will not allow any public...
It's appropriate for you to, it's appropriate for you to comment now on a forthcoming agenda item.
Okay. I was just wondering, the number of people that are being expected is listed as 400 or something like that, so how many cars would need to be accommodated in the parking area, and is the parking area an appropriate size for that? So I guess I have a question about that. And, and just the other, the comment would be, I'm very curious, we've never had this before, I don't think, I mean, $2,000 cabana, and what, what's the purpose for that? That's why I wanted to speak to the people who are asking for the license, but that's, I guess, I guess that will not be. All right, thank you, bye.
Yeah, that'll all, I think that'll all be addressed in their presentation, and I'm also anticipating probably in some questions that the board may have, and also some reporting from our Assistant Town Administrator as well.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on then. To my fellow board members, the first hearing, that application is not completed, and what, the event is not going to occur until October. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to open the hearing, reading the notice, and then I'm going to ask for a motion to continue the matter until, I believe, what was it, September's?
12th.
12th?
Yeah.
Okay.
You either have the 5th, 3rd, or 19th, and I would think it was the 12th.
So that they don't have to re-advertise it?
Correct.
Okay, the Yarmouth Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority, has received an application from Beyond the Bounds, Naomi Steckman, for a special one-day wine and malt license, and a one-day special entertainment license for the Beyond the Bounds performance at Seago Beach, 125 Seago Road, West Yarmouth, Mass., on October 7th, 2023, with a rain date of October 8th, 2023. The alcohol service hours will be from 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM. The entertainment hours will be 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM, including setup and takedown time. Entertainment will include concert, dance, public show, dancing by patrons and entertainers, live music. The hearing will be held on Tuesday, August 1st, 2023, at Town Hall, 1146 through 28 South Yarmouth. The Selectmen's meeting begins at 6:00 PM. Written comments will be accepted until 4:30 PM Friday, July 28th, 2023, at the Administration Office at Town Hall, or can be submitted electronically to public comment at yarmouth.ma.us. Verbal comments will be accepted at the hearing. So I would like a motion to continue this matter until September 12th, 2023, I guess to commence at 6:00 PM.
Don't move.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? So that passes unanimously. Next one, not so quick. Let me find that one. Okay, this is the notice on the Jamaican Festival license. Anybody that's going to be heard on this, you want to move up to the front table?
Can we move up the chair for all three?
Yeah, sure, go ahead. A couch if you want. Doesn't matter. Okay, so what I'm going to do is, I'm going to read the legal notice into the record, and then one of you will make a presentation as to what this is going to be, what you want the board to do by way of granting a license. There will be, I know there's been a report...
Did you pass out the... Yes, I did, Mr. Chairman. So we've been working with Mr. Lindsay over the past few days, and...
Bill's going to have, because this is rather involved, and Bill's going to have some update about meetings that have occurred with respect to this application. We're going to have questions from the board, and then we'll deliberate on this. The Yarmouth Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority, has received an application from Ricardo Lindsay for a special one-day wine and malt license, and a one-day special entertainment license for the Jamaica Festival at the Yarmouth Drive-In site, 669 Route 28, West Yarmouth, Mass., on Sunday, August 6th, 2023. The event hours will be from 12:00 PM to 6:00 PM. Entertainment will include an amplification system, recorded music, 2 DJs using one station, and dancing by patrons. The hearing will be held on Tuesday, August 1st, 2023, at Town Hall, 1146 through 28 South Yarmouth. The Selectmen's meeting begins at 6:00 PM. Written comments will be accepted until 4:30 PM Friday, July 28th, 2023, at the Administration Office at Town Hall, or can be submitted electronically to public comment at yarmouth.ma.us. Verbal comments will be accepted at the hearing. So do you folks want to introduce yourselves for the record, and then we can have the presentation from whoever is going to be your spokesman?
Ricardo Lindsay, and I'm the CEO of Go Get His Entertainment, applicant for the Jamaica Festival, Branch Chandy Cape.
Good evening, my name is Stacy Coley. I'm here as one of the persons that are keeping the Jamaica Festival.
Hello, my name is Kevin Delasapret from Willow Street Tavern in Hyannis. I am not a business partner with Ricardo, but we do a lot of business together at my restaurant and event space, so I am here just to help him along here, answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, so who's going to make the presentation?
It'll, it'll mostly be Ricardo as on the application, but there was some things that I might be able to help out with.
Okay, bye.
A small language barrier.
Tell us about your event.
Okay, so our event is...
And speak loudly into the microphone, bring it, microphone up there.
Okay. So the event is basically our independence celebration.
Mm-hmm.
And we're just trying to bring our culture together, and try to, like, this is like what we do in Jamaica. We, well, let's not get into this, it's, so, we're trying to just like bring our culture together, we do it through music, you know, I know there are questions that we'll get to that about the cabanas and stuff like that, and this is all a part of our culture. So we have tried to have events like this before, not through the town. I've met with Officer Kelsey, he's shown us like proper channels to get through the town, I've been working with the town, with the police, with Mr. Scott, with everyone, just try to get this event and work by the proper guidelines of the town system.
And just to add to what Ricardo said, it's, the Jamaica Festival, it basically commemorates Jamaica's independence, so it's like, it's synonymous to the US's 4th of July, so we have like big celebrations. In Jamaica, they have like the Jamaican Gala, and it happens for a couple of days, where they have Jamaican food, Jamaican dances, basically historic things to, that represents our culture. So that is what we're basically trying to do here, just getting everyone together that is not able to go back home at this time, probably because of work obligations. So we just thought that we could do something like this for them, just for us to just come together and celebrate our independence, which this year is Jamaica's 61st Independence.
Okay. So just by way of background, I'm going to be getting to Bill shortly, so what happened apparently is the police chief, I think and other staff as well, did some checking online about this event and how it was being advertised, and they noticed some discrepancies between the application and what was in the ad. And there was, I guess, a couple of meetings that you had with various staff and departments, in fact, most of the department heads, health...
Correct.
Building, was it conservation?
Health, building, fire, police, DBW in one of them, myself, and then Town Administrator, Administrator staff.
So, the chief had written a, an email indicating that, the application said the fee was going to be $50 per person, and there were these other rental arrangements you could have, like cabanas, which, the price of which went as high as $2,000. And then there were some other things that were advertised that were, that raised questions. For example, if somebody rented a cabana, it said they got some Red Bull and other things, and then it said a number of bottles, didn't say bottles of what, it just said bottles. I think it was like, was it five?
Correct.
Like five bottles, okay? So you're advertising something online to the public, and so what is it? Five bottles of what?
Five bottles of wine, so...
Well, why didn't you say that? Why didn't the ad say five bottles of wine?
And I guess that's kind of why I'm here tonight, that he asked me to come and help him. It's kind of just a language thing for Jamaicans when they call a bottle, it could be anything. If they came to my restaurant, or another restaurant or something, a bottle could be a bottle of Bel Air champagne, it could be a bottle of wine, it could be a bottle of Hennessy, whatnot. This particular license is only bearing wine, so they just use the terminology bottle.
So that was the issue. The reason that's important, I'll get to you, the reason that's important is because this is a for-profit activity, so on a special one-day license, the Commonwealth, not the local licensing authority, but the Commonwealth limits that license to, it's, it's wine and malt, which is basically beer and wine.
Yeah.
Only a nonprofit can get the full special license, which would involve all alcoholic The other thing that was bothersome, I guess, to some people in town in the ad was it said hookahs were also going to be available to people who rented cabanas and other, yes, facilities, right?
Correct, on the original...
And so there was a meeting in Town Hall, and so I want to hear your answer to that question. Why was, why was that included in what was going to be smoked?
So, the original process...
Look at me when you answer me, because I want to, I want to see your face when you give me this answer.
No, and truthfully, the, the original process of Jamaican thing, do smoke hookah, it is very big in the nightclub scene in Rhode Island, it's very big in Jamaica. I know there is an interpretation of what could be smoked in it, but it is tobacco. When he did find out that hookahs were not going to be allowed, he has deleted that from his application. But that was the original thought process, that they would smoke tobacco. Hookah is a, not personally my liking, but it is a big thing in their culture.
Okay, the other, and again, I'm just trying to get a little bit of focus here, but why weren't, why weren't these other alternatives like cabanas and things like that that are advertised online? Why weren't they included in the application? It would have been very easy to say 50 bucks at the gate, and then have an attachment explaining all these other rental alternatives.
Yeah.
Why wasn't that done?
So, so I think it was not deliberate by any means. Ricardo and I have done numerous events over the last couple of years together. Usually, there has been a couple off-site locations, Weirham and Falmouth, but he does a lot at my facility, where I own a restaurant and a event space. We're obviously very limited there, because we're at 99 capacity, and to celebrate their Jamaican Independence Day would not be worth it for 99 people. I think this is kind of where he's looking for a lot more guidance from me, as we've worked together over the few years, and, and again, I have no financial interest in this whatsoever. I've just had a relationship that we have built over the last two years of working together and putting events on. Obviously, I have an event space, I do Jamaican nights, he is obviously Jamaican, I am not, so he brings in the entertainment in that clientele basis. So I, I think he's just learning some of the things that come along. You know, when I saw it right after, I said hookah is never going to be allowed, so, you know, boom, he had the conversation. With cabanas, that is a, an event, this type of an event is something that his clientele, his regular people that he socializes with, there's going to be ordinary people who walk in and can afford X, and then there is people who will put seven, eight people in a cabana and maybe switch throughout the day, and it is worthwhile for them to spend $2,000. It is a little higher price, and not the average person can afford that, correct, I do get that, but it does come with food and things of that nature, and then the cost to build the cabanas is not cheap. So his next event, maybe next year, the price would come down, because right now he's upfronting all the initial cost.
There's always, also a discrepancy, there's a number of people. How many people are anticipated to be at this event?
So he put up to 400. Right now, no cabanas.
200, and then he crossed it out and he put 400.
Yeah, I, I think that he was originally thinking...
That was 200 was the original application, and then the officer asked me if, what if more than 200 came, so we started making preparations for 400 people, but still thinking of 200 patrons, so we got enough...
You, you did this last year, right? The town shut it down because you didn't have the proper permits, you did it at Sandy Pond. How many people were at that event?
Close to 200, it didn't reach 200, closer to 200.
Closer to 200 people. So you expect more than that this year?
The hope is for more than 200.
Yes.
Correct. As the facility can hold that amount.
Bill, I'm going to go to you, and you can tell us about the meetings that you've had. Who was in attendance and what conditions or recommendations have come out of those meetings?
Sure. What we wanted to do is, Mr. Lindsay filed an application on the 6th, and then on the 12th, there was a meeting, minutes are in the back of that packet you have, and then there were still issues, and subsequent to that, we found some of the advertising, so we needed to reconcile the advertising to the application. So we had a meeting on Monday with the departments to follow up on the meeting on the 12th, and another one today, and it was as much of...
That one was yesterday, wasn't it?
Yes, yesterday.
Second one, yeah.
So there was the meeting on the 12th, after the application on the 6th, and then the meeting on Monday, which was, we went over the report you see in front of you, which were questions, and Mr. Lindsay answered the ones which are the crucial ones that you had pointed out in the table. The rest of them are comments by department heads, and we went over those somewhat today. Some of the pictures, like the cabana and everything else of the advertising, is there. Now, he's provided us with a amended site plan, which Fire Department wanted a fire lane, we wanted to make the, move the site away from the adjacent wetlands areas and everything else, and I'd rather have him walk through that when I get done the site plan, so you understand the relationship between the components, and he can explain that to you. But in meeting with him, the hookahs are out, the bottle issue was defined, as you can see, drinks, malt, and wine, and then advertising, you know, we asked five bottles of what, and he's listed them there. And then also, he is made arrangements with the tugboat restaurant, and to act essentially as its commissary to prepare the food, which puts us in a position which is better, because it's a local restaurant that we inspect, so we're sure that food is being prepared per the code. So there are other, other issues that police and chief is here, but worked out with him in terms of security, and, you know, our premise is we like to stay in the back around with the force and have his 12-person security team address issues, and we talked about some of the concerns that we may have in an event of 400. And if we can, I can have him go over those sort of changes and the site plan, and then I can add to that, rather than, because when you, staff presents something, it, it's on the record as staff and not as the applicant, so...
I hear you. Just hold that for one second. I, I noticed in the ad, you just mentioned two DJs, but don't you advertise for live music as well online?
Yes, so...
Is there going to be live music?
No, not live, not live music, like bands, no. Live performance by a local, local Jamaican entertainer, but not like a live bands or stuff like that, no.
Well, what kind of music is it going to be?
Just what we call into...
Play a musical instrument?
No.
No.
And they're going to sing?
Yes.
The, the DJ itself, who is, you know, has a laptop and recorded music, they're like a performer too. They come out, they talk on the microphone while another DJ is playing recorded music. They kind of sing and like, they have rituals and chants that they kind of go along with is kind of what he means. It's not a three-piece band, drums, guitar, keyboard, nothing like that.
Okay. So are you prepared to, or one of you, to prepare to go over this diagram and explain?
Sure.
It's going to be where?
Each of you should have in front of you the updated site plan, which has a yellow fire lane road around it. And just as a quick background...
The packet you gave us tonight?
It should be related to this particular item. And just to go over what Mr. Lindsay changed for us, and then he can go over what you see on the...
Is this the plan that says Exhibit A at the, at the end of the packet?
No, it would be a separate document. Exhibit A was the original plan.
So where, where is that plan?
It should be, yes, it should be like under the materials or...
Is it in the regular packet?
No.
No.
There you go.
There you go.
This one?
Yeah, the yellow road around it.
Next one, I think, after that one.
Oh, this one here?
There you go. That's it.
Go ahead.
Where are you finding that?
I find it in the material he passed out tonight, right near the end. Okay, I, I saw some of these comments. And the fire department wanted to make sure that they had 360-degree vehicle access in case of emergencies. So I, I can see, I can see that jumps out at me right away. But go ahead, tell us.
The changes between prior site plan and this site plan are, as you indicated, Mr. Chairman, there's a fire lane that provides them access all the way around the site. There is a orange line, snow fence. The DNR department, in concert with conservation, want to make sure that people were not going into the wetlands areas or the storage areas. This is an older photograph, so a lot of that storage isn't there. But we wanted it, whatever is there fenced off. The site has a smaller area that they're using. And they're pulling it away from the vegetation around the site. And it's pretty much the same in terms of its layout. And I'd rather have Mr. Lindsay describe what that means in terms of what these icons are and everything else on the page.
What are these yellow dots?
These are all umbra...
Circular, circular things?
Umbrellas.
They're what?
Umbrellas, like for shade.
Umbrellas.
Like a beach, like a beach umbrella.
Those are the, those are the round dots, the circles?
Yes.
Okay. And, and are there tables under there?
Yes.
Yes.
How many people under each one of them?
So it would be like three people for the reservation. But sometimes, you know, you can, if you're in a perimeter, so under shade is more, you can fit more. But three per, three persons to umbrella.
Three?
Yeah.
Is that what he said?
Yes.
Okay. Now, I see the bar, right? And here's a concern I have. Is all the liquor going to be served from the bar? Where's the alcohol going to be served from?
From the bar.
From the bar?
Yeah.
All of it?
All of it.
Okay. This, this is, this is a question I have and a concern that I have. When you advertise whatever the bottles were, you're going to say it was wine. I'm not so sure I agree with that. But it was so many bottles for a cabana. So how, if I'm getting five bottles of wine or whatever in a cabana, how, how is that served?
So...
I mean, you're advertising it on a cabana basis.
Yeah, because the person who buys the cabana can have up to X amount of people in it with them.
So who serves them the alcohol?
So then there is a, when they enter the cabana, there is a private waitress for each cabana that tends to them. Gets them a fruit plate, gets them food, gets them a bottle of wine. They don't just give them five bottles. You know, one at a time.
So is that five bottles at the bar or is that five bottles in the cabana?
Nope, so that person would, you know, Jane Doe is the waitress for Cabana One. They would literally, what would you guys like? We're going to start with a bottle of Chardonnay and we want a fruit tray and two Red Bulls and 10 bottles of water. That person would go back to the bar, there's a station behind the bar, would take that and bring it to that.
So how many people are going to be in a cabana?
Up to seven.
So that waitress has to keep track of those seven people?
Each waitress has each cabana. As of right now, there are no cabanas sold, obviously, with the price, but...
2,000 ones haven't been sold.
The $2,000 cabanas are not sold.
No.
And miss, if I may, Mr. Chairman, on page three of the report, there's a sort of a diagram of what the cabana looks like.
Page three.
So it's on the, I mean, Ricardo, that's pretty much what... Okay.
Where is it?
It's the middle photograph between the two advertisements.
Yep, that's it.
What about it?
They're on, well, I'm just showing you what the cabana looks like. It's on either side of the stage and that's one side of the stage.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I get that, okay. So are you aware that serving alcohol to an intoxicated person is a crime? It's against the law? Are you aware of that?
Yes, yes, I am.
So somebody's, the reason I'm concerned about how this alcohol is being distributed is somebody's got to be making observations of the people who are drinking the alcohol.
Definitely.
Because if it gets to the point where they knew or should have known that the person was intoxicated and they serve them alcohol, that's, that's not only a violation of the, of the liquor laws from the standpoint of this board, but it's a crime.
Understood.
So each server slash waitress is tip-certified to know all of those things? And they will be handling...
Yeah, and that's another thing apparently that got clarified at those meetings. Because it originally said the manager would be tip-certified. And then it said that...
Because originally, he thought that only one person needed to be tip-certified, kind of like a restaurant, not every single...
So are those tip certificates going to be filed with the licensing department before the event? In there, all of them? All of the people?
Yes.
That are going to be serving alcohol?
And if...
There's not going to be any additional people serving alcohol?
All of the people that are going to be serving at the bar has been tip-certified. So one person, tip-certified, will be managing all the waitresses that are not tip-certified.
Okay. So I'm fixated with this bottles thing that's blank. So what's the Red Bull for? What, what do you mix with Red Bull? Wine?
They do. Stone ginger wine, which is Jamaican wine, if you've ever heard of it, and Red Bull. I'm not going to say they mix everything with Red Bull, but they do mix everything with Red Bull.
And some people just drink it.
Okay. Who are you going to buy the alcohol from?
Colonials.
It's called Colonial Distributors, Colonial Beverage Distributors in Dartmouth.
Have you ordered it yet?
No, we're waiting till after the year.
Okay.
They're not actually allowed to order it yet until they get granted the one-day license.
I understand. So all the IDs are going to be checked at the gate, right? Nobody under 21 is even going to allow to be, to come into the event, correct?
No, correct.
Am I right on that?
Yes, you're right, correct.
And just to add to that, we've actually had someone send us a message based on the clarification that we did, which is a good thing that we did that clarification because they did have one person coming that was 20 years old. So we had to refund that person.
Yeah. And, and again, I just tell you, because I'm the licensing chairman as well as the chairman of this board, serving minors is very serious. That's also a criminal offense.
No.
So if you have any questions about anybody, you just don't let them in.
Positively.
Because even if they give you a fake ID, it's still on you.
We, we have, at my establishment, there's six security guards who are part of his corporation that work for him too, that work at my place every week. Stacy has been working my front door, checking IDs for the last two years in my club. We don't, we don't see it as often as you would think, to be truthful with you, you know? And, and I can honestly attest that out of all the different events we have and different nights, if it's whatever ethnic background night, I would have Jamaican night every night because we don't have any issues. There's not intoxication, there's not fighting, nothing like that. If I can ease some of your concern with that.
I'm not really concerned with anything outside of the alcohol issues. I mean, I think the other problems generally come as a result of people getting, having too much to drink and things like that. Okay, I'm, I'm going to break away just momentarily. And I'm going to go to my board to see if they have any questions. I'm going to start with Selectman Forrest.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Could you give me your name again and the establishment that you run?
My, my name?
Yes.
My name is Kevin DeLarciprete.
How do you spell that?
D E L L A R C I P R E T E.
Here's, here's a letter of support, it's a package with his name.
Forgive me, I haven't read all of the material that's been pulled together at the last minute.
Again, I have nothing to really do with the event whatsoever.
You have, you have a business as well, Kevin?
I own Willow Street Tavern.
Willow Street Tavern in Hyannis?
It is in Hyannis.
Okay.
It has an event space attached to it.
And you're obviously here to vouch for them, you've worked with them, you're here to help them and support them?
Oh, privately.
Okay.
I'm a huge part of the Jamaican community. We hold events every single week.
You are?
Yes.
Okay, meaning?
Meaning 99% of all of my staff is Jamaican. I own a nightclub that we have Jamaican nights. I deal with these two and 50 others on a weekly basis. And, you know, he is branching off on his own, I guess you would say.
Right.
Something like this event, would I love to do it positively? It's not worthwhile for me or him because it is such a big celebration. It's like 4th of July. It's like having a 4th of July barbecue when you live in a condo with a three-by-six balcony.
Right. Right, so the, the celebration, is it designed to really attract the public? Or is it just trying to attract people that are Jamaican or Jamaican heritage?
I, I think, I'd probably have to say, you know, it is open to the public.
Right.
But truthfully, I think...
It's a chance for people...
They're probably looking at about 90% that are Jamaicans.
Yeah.
But we love, we love when other nationalities come by, come to get the jerk chickens. We love that.
And they want that, correct.
Right.
I own a regular tavern restaurant, but we serve Jamaican jerk chicken every week. And it sells out the door, so...
Yeah. No, I'm, I'm, I'm very, I'm very interested in this, this event. This is all new. And obviously, there, there's, there's a challenge of just getting the right things coordinated and getting things to get... I get, I get all that.
Correct.
This wouldn't be the first time we've had an applicant that's needed some help in pulling everything together.
As Chairman mentioned, he had some difficulties last year. And we've been talking about that for the last 360 days. And he's been outsourcing other people to help him with that.
Would, would it be appropriate, Mr. Chairman, to just talk about some of the previous difficulties?
Absolutely.
And what, and what, what has been done or being proposed to address them? Could you speak to that, please?
I, I think that Ricardo would be better off speaking exactly what I heard that day. I was just a guest.
Ricardo, can you speak to that, please?
Yes, so two years ago, in Sandepan, we held the event unsanctioned. And it was, it wasn't shut down, but the police came and they left. Last year, we tried to keep the event again, same venue. It was shut down before it began. And that's when I spoke with Officer Kelsey. He started directing me into this, start the stuff and going through the town and places I can use. And that's what sparked all this.
Now, the previous events, where were they held or intended to be held?
The name of that park, um...
On the Sandepan.
Sandy Pond.
Oh, Sandy Pond, here.
Then the police shut it down, then they went to Barnstable.
Oh.
And the Barnstable police came and shut that down.
I see, I see. And it's, okay. Those are my only questions right now, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Just to say though, they were without incident. Just to add, they were all without incident. We shut down as soon as the police said, shut down, close it down.
I understand.
So we're going to go to Selectman Horgan next.
Just a couple of quick questions. You mentioned the waitress who'd be monitoring the alcohol in the cabanas. Is it one waitress per cabana? She's not going to be monitoring three or four cabanas?
No.
One, or she?
The, the goal is if a person rents the cabana, they'll have a private person just for them.
Okay. I'm curious, why so late? Why are we just seeing this now for something that's supposed to happen next weekend?
We were searching for venues. We didn't know the proper channeling. So all this, you know, this is what it lets. We didn't know where to go, where to start.
And obviously, the Independence Day is a date specific, so you're trying to hit that.
Yes, correct.
You've had experience with our town for two years in a row. I would have hoped that you would have tried to plug into the process a little quicker than this, though. Because this kind of puts us on our heels.
I understand.
Trying to deal with an awful lot of information in a short period of time. This might be a better question for Bill, but do we have any idea how many cars that lot will park?
No, I mean, each car with its lane behind it is 350 square feet per car. They are parking, as you would call valet or church style.
So it's valet?
Yeah, so they'll, well, it's less valet. It's like they'll line everybody up and they'll be parked in a row. We talked about that today with them heading out. So when they come in, they do sort of a loop and then come back out. But I'd rather have Ricardo explain that because you don't really want either myself and, I mean, if the gentleman, when you want to answer, have Ricardo answer so the applicant is on record for that.
I'm just curious about access. You know, how do people get out if they're... Are you packing them in so that it's going to be difficult for people to leave?
No.
How does that all work?
So each row, when a car is parked, you go, you pull around, you go to the front, there will be a gap, like the space of a car, in between each row. So people can get out easily.
Okay. Your security personnel, what kind of experience do they have in that role of security?
They've worked on Boston. It's called, they're called B-Tree precisely, but I'm trying to remember the show. There's a big grooving in the park, lady grooving in the park. And that's a big, big, big event, like probably like 2,000 people.
Is it a security agency? Or is it just a bunch of people who are going to be fulfilling that role?
It's a legit security company.
It's a, it's a security company?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Correct, so he has X amount from that. And then he is utilizing, because we are not open that day, a few people from our security team who he has worked with on his normal nights, who are obviously all over 21, work at local establishments out here. You know, my restaurant, I don't want to say the names of other big restaurants that would need security and want security. I don't think I need four security guards on a Friday night, but it makes people feel comfortable in this day and age. And it's more than just security. It's, it's actually, so from checking the IDs to, you know, warning everyone, making sure, which they'll all have, every single security guard has a wand, metal detector. Then they'll be transposing towards the end of the night to assist with exiting, things like that. So it's more than that, getting people off the property, getting people out.
If, if I may, we went over this with Ricardo and he was very helpful in telling us all this. I think he really needs to answer the questions. If you're telling us you don't have any fiduciary connection to this, the applicant needs to answer the question. So, and you gave us a good description on how that's going to work. If Ricardo, if you could go through that. And you were talking about 12 personnel. So some of the things that this gentleman was going over, if you could go over that, the gate and everything else, so...
Yeah, so he wants you to give us just a little rundown of how many security people you're going to have and what they're going to do at the gate.
Okay, so we have 12 security personnel. On the application, it says 10, but I requested two more. So one, one of the security personnel will be assisting right at the entrance where you see ticket redemption. you see ticket redemption. There'll be one security guard there directing each car where to go. That's gonna lead to two security personnel that works, works with Kevin, not from B-3 security, but these are our personal securities that will be assisting with the parking. The other two securities that we're gonna have is gonna be inside the venue, looking around and also being at the cabanas, nobody that goes into the VIP that shouldn't be in there or wearing the proper wristband. So the other eleven security personnel, they're gonna be at the gates, inside the event and just regular security work, warning people and everything.
And do I understand there'll be a Yarmouth police presence as well?
There's gonna be like six.
Yes, six.
There's six, one in traffic control and the rest within the site and what we talked about this morning or this afternoon was that their approach is going to be really in the background, so we want his security personnel to deal with some of the issues of, you know, the serving of liquor, the making sure it's staying with beer and wine, making sure we have the correct food vendors there. And then if they need help, if anything, you know, escalates, then police would be available on the same radio systems.
Okay. You know, generally speaking, I'm really excited about this idea, I really am. I, I'd love Yarmouth to be a sponsor of something like this. As I said, it's the timing that troubles me because this is really last minute.
Yeah, and furthermore, Dan, if, if staff didn't have these meetings, you talk about being behind the eight ball, I mean, they did a great job in terms of.
Pulling it together.
Working things out with the applicants and, I mean, I'm looking at the meeting, I think this was yesterday, right?
Correct.
Ricardo was there and Chris Gray, I guess he's another person you work with.
Yes.
From the town, we had Bill Scott, we had Assistant Town Administrator, we had Pam Barnes and Mary Alice Florio from the Town Administrator's Office, we had Bill Benetti and Dave Condon from the Natural Resources, we had Deputy Chief John Sawyer from the Fire Department, we had Mark Grills from the Building Commissioners, the Building Commissioner, we had Deputy Chief Drew O'Malley, we had Lieutenant Cal Bogdan from the Yarmouth Police Department, we had Barry Lewis and Phil Renault from the Health Department and Robby Whitehouse from DPW. That was just at the yesterday's meeting and then there was a meeting prior to that. So I mean, I think your point's well taken that at a big event like this, we gotta get better notice to, to be able to go through everything and to be able to properly vet the event and, and get the questions answered. And if it wasn't for the effort really of staff, which is extraordinary, of what they did in such a short period of time, we'd be really in the dark on this. We'd probably be licensing something with a small fraction of the information we should have.
And don't get us wrong, the idea of having better preparation is so that everything goes smoothly and so that this is a really positive event that we can do year after year after year. So all we're trying to do is avoid surprises or bad results simply because it was too tight a timeline. It has nothing to do with the merits of the actual event itself, which I, as I said, I think it sounds wonderful. Will we have a chance at some point just to hear from the Chief of Police if, if he has any further concerns?
He, Chief Lennon is back there if you wish to ask him any questions.
Do you have questions for the Chief?
I actually have a question for him.
So I'll defer this.
Chief Lennon, come to the microphone and I guess there's some input they want and Darkest says she has a question. I'm gonna go to Darkest first because she has this question for you.
Chief, on the police list of items, it says that you require security from Friday to Sunday to prevent the site from being used by other unsanctioned groups. Has something been arranged for that?
Yes, so we spoke to Ricardo, so the security company is supposed to be there, so they're gonna set up on Friday and then they're gonna break down after. So, and the reason for that is because we found another social media post of a, a different group not related to Ricardo that advertised an event on Saturday at the exact same address. So our concern is that once Ricardo had set it up, there was gonna be a group that came in and tried to slide in and take it, so that's why we requested the security, because Ricardo has to set up on Friday so that the Building Department, the Health Department, they can go in and they can do their inspections, because nobody's gonna be working on Saturday. They're gonna be there Sunday when the event kicks off, so that's why we, we requested that.
Okay, and on, on number five of your items, it says that Ricardo has ordered the six detail officers and we are trying to fill the shifts. Did you get them filled?
Yes, they were voluntold. So we're gonna have, we will have six officers there, detail, as Bill said, we're gonna have one traffic officer that'll rotate, we'll have five officers inside and then we're gonna, he's gonna pay for those and then the Police Department's gonna hire a lieutenant, so we have a commander down there just in case something happens. Because our concerns are just, they've been mentioned already by the board, a lack of transparency and maybe just a, a misunderstanding of the process, but, you know, it raised concerns when we found out what the social media posts looked like, you know, on Instagram where it showed, I read the town application, it showed fifty dollars per person and then they were charging up to two thousand dollars for a cabana, seventeen hundred dollars for something else, and that raised concerns. And then again, the, the change in the amount of people, and I know that he can't, Ricardo can't tell us how many people are gonna show up, but that's what we have to base our, our security response off of, how many people we think we're gonna have. So we, we have had positive conversations, he's gonna limit it at four hundred, once it gets to four hundred, he's gonna close it off, there's gonna be a no re-entry, so if you leave, you're out. They're gonna be, the security's gonna check coolers to make sure that no one's bringing outside alcohol in. But other concerns that I have is the cabana, five bottles for seven people, that's way too much alcohol. And, and I, and I, we had a good conversation, it's a cultural difference between what we do here and what they do in Jamaica and he explained that to us. We agree today that there will be no hookah, that is, that is off the table, because as the Chairman stated, I, I believe that something else would be smoked in there other than, than flavored tobacco. So, but, you know, it's, my concern is a fact that he's inexperienced to doing this. He's trying to do the right thing, but it came at us a little late in the game for us to, to prepare for the magnitude of the size that we could have. The event that happened at Sandy Pond two years ago, we did show up there, but our course of action was not to engage them because we were, we were outnumbered. There were a couple hundred people on the field, the event was going on, we didn't receive any complaints, we stumbled upon it. And then when we try, when the officers, they tried to engage people, it was, nobody knew who was, who was in charge, so our officers just stayed back and, and it ended peacefully and they, they broke everything down and they left and there weren't any issues. Because we knew that that happened, Amy Howell was on top of it the next year and she showed up and she, at eight o'clock in the morning, they were already setting up a stage. So we stopped that immediately, we actually locked Sandy Pond, if you remember that, which created a bit of a stir in the town, but we locked Sandy Pond so that nobody could get in until they broke everything down and then they went into Barnstable and they set up at a, at a warehouse in Barnstable and the Barnstable police had to go and, and break the party up. Ricardo was cooperative, there were two other people that he does, he does business with and they were less cooperative, but they did, they did shut it down. So, again, it's just looking at the town application, fifty dollars versus a two thousand and he gave us an explanation, not really having, we had, we've had conversation with the security company, but there's no security plan in place. So we don't have anything physically in hand that's gonna say what happens if there's an evacu, if we have to evacuate the area. I looked their company up online, they are registered with, with the Massachusetts State Police Certification Unit as a guard company, so they are bonded, they are insured. We discussed how they're gonna handle checking patrons in and checking IDs and, and as Bill said, the Police Department, we will, we're, we're gonna stand back and let them handle it and if we have to step in, we will step in. So he's trying to do, they're trying to do the right thing, I just think we're, we're a little late in the game. I would hope that it would be a, a nice friendly event, but you could see by the advertising, it didn't come off to me that it was being advertised as a Jamaican independence, because that's like too font on the, on the advertisement and the rest of his branch on Cape Cod with the, with the various pictures, so it looked like it was being catered to, to a different, a different clientele, but our meetings were productive. I couldn't make the meeting yesterday, but I was today and Ricardo has been, he's been trying to do his best, but our concerns again are, you know, the advertisement, the size of the crowd, type of the alcohol is being served. When I saw five bottles and then Red Bull and Cranberry, I've never heard of anybody drinking that with anything but Grey Goose, but they say they drink it with wine, so maybe that is the case. The security experience, we haven't been able to do a deep dive into the company to see what they've actually handled, if they've done an event this size, but like I said, they are licensed and bonded, so that's, that's pretty much my concern with the event.
Chief, I think Dan had either some questions or wanted you to comment on something?
No, but on that last point, will, will bags be searched so that people aren't bringing alcohol onto the premises?
Definitely, definitely.
Good question.
I'm curious about this, this is the first time that we're doing this and there's a lot of unknowns. Would you be comfortable or willing at this point to reduce that number so that, you know, we're looking at maybe two fifty, two hundred, two fifty the first year, just to run this as a trial to see how we do? I'm a little uncomfortable with asking four hundred people to come in when we've never run this and it's so last minute. Is something like that amenable to you? Would you be willing to consider something like that? I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but I'm trying to meet halfway here.
Totally understand, I would be willing to think about it, but it's like, we try to expand the space enough so there's, there will not be like a crowd gathering, we have a big, big space where we, we fence around.
You'll have enough seating to accommodate four hundred people?
Not seating, because they don't like sit down.
They'll be on the ground.
They're gonna be standing.
Just standing?
Yes.
So you'll have the cabanas, you'll have the umbrellas, which, they're gonna be seating under the umbrellas?
No.
So it's all standing?
All standing.
For six hours?
Except for the VIP.
Okay.
Yes.
That's luxury experience, but.
Okay.
I can tell you on a Friday night, we don't have any bars or seats at the bar, nothing, we don't have any seats.
I'm an old man. Six hours is a long time.
Jamaican clientele is different, we bring the chairs back in for Saturday night.
Stay six hours.
A lot of times they, they come out actually at five.
I'm sorry?
So sometimes when we say six o'clock, a lot of times they come out four thirty or five o'clock and it's frustrating, but, you know, we're, we're trying to get them to come out earlier, but most times they don't come out so early.
I think what he's trying to say with that is that he doesn't feel, and I can vouch for that, that from twelve to six would be four hundred people. I open at nine thirty and I don't see a person before eleven.
Okay. All right, those are all my questions, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We're gonna go to our Selectman Smith.
Our meeting today, we did talk about no service after five fifteen. And, and alcohol off the tables by five thirty and then the, and then the DJ shut down at six o'clock and he agreed to that, so we would not have everything pushing right up to the, to the last minute.
No service after five fifteen?
No service after five fifteen and then alcohol off the table at five thirty so that everybody can start getting ready to, to leave and he did, he did agree to that.
Chief, you're stealing my thunder, my questions that I was gonna ask. Question, Ricardo, the patron shade, what does that mean?
Patron shade, so that's like.
Is that a big tent?
A big metal truss and then, yeah, they, they put like material, like cloth material, they run for the shade in the middle.
Okay, so, so my point is there is a place for people to get out of the sun and.
Yes, underneath, yeah, that's for it.
Right. What I don't have on this are dimensions, do we have any idea of the dimensions of, I mean, it's a square, so if you can just give me, give me one dimension, I know the other, other, other three.
Hundred and forty feet.
Hundred and forty feet? Okay. Yeah, that should easily handle four hundred people. Yeah, yeah. I was gonna ask about police coverage and, and that's, that's been covered. I am a little bit worried about if there's an incident at the entrance with either someone trying to bring in alcohol or God forbid, some kind of a weapon or something like that. How is that gonna be handled? Because again, I don't see anything about your, your security handling that or how it's gonna get handled.
Yeah, I can go over that if you would.
Handle that.
They would handle that.
Yes.
ID.
Yep.
Immediately, on even stepping up, full scan, there's no backpack, so no guy should be carrying anything except for, it is Jamaican culture that they, I call it a fanny pack across their chest, but they have their own name for it.
Yep.
Every Jamaican carries one of those, it's a, it's a thing. They couldn't fit anything inside of it, they're skinny and every single woman who has a purse has to be opened up completely, it's completely wanted, every single security guard will have a wand.
And, and you, and you did say, once you've hit four hundred people.
Close enough.
You close off and there's no, no coming and going. Again, I'm repeating, repeating some of the stuff that's already been, already been asked and stuff.
To go back to what you just said, even with the gun aspect, even if you had a license to carry, I do, there's still no guns allowed.
Right, okay.
And we're, we're preparing a sign that says event closed, once we hit four hundred people, we're gonna put a sign at the front that says event closed.
Okay, event closed. I think it's a great thing, it's not, probably not as much fun as the number of people that show up at the Blue Mountains, but it, it should, should be a fun event and, and, you know, if you're gonna do this next year and this is successful, come see us a little earlier.
Definitely, definitely, definitely.
I'm gonna break away to our Assistant Town Administrator for a moment and we wanna talk about, we have a standard, and I don't know if this has come up in your discussions, but we have a standard license agreement that pertains to that facility for special events and as I recall, that prototype agreement, there was, there was a lot of input from the drive-in reuse committee as well as the Board of Selectmen on, on that form, but you wanna just go over that quickly?
Sure. Ricardo, this is basically agreement and I'll, I'll give it to you actually if you wanna copy. This is something you use for the carnival and it, what it does is it edifies everything we've been talking about in terms of conditions, that there'll be twelve security personnel that will stop at five fifteen, so rather than having a collection of notes, as you've seen from myself and, and others, you put it basically in a, a license agreement and the Board's allowed to issue licenses without, you know, procurement or whatever for a short period of time.
I think we should also do the conditions though too when we make a motion on this, but.
Right, I mean, and, and we would enter those conditions as they've been in here in terms of cleanup and other things.
It should be in there as well, yeah.
Right, so we will take what we've written in reports, take what the Chief has indicated and then put it in this agreement, whether it be party agreement or an addendum to the agreement. But what it does is it clearly articulates the parties and everything else and then the Town Administrator, well, that would be me this time, signs a document. So, and, but I think the Board has a copy of it and what you would do is say, execute a license agreement pursuant to the discussion here, any conditions you may have and the notes and discussions with department heads, police personnel for the use of the site. And we would change everything from what the, as you see in the sample, it is the carnival that you had a few years back maybe. And so it, it turns the dialogue into, you know, definitive agreement. Sometimes you don't do this when it's a very small type of event, but I think this warrants this type of agreement.
Okay. Does anybody, do you have any further questions, Mark? Or comments?
Well, I'm, I guess what I'm looking for is a document that literally has, that has a complete outline of the proposal, the application with all the conditions.
I think I, what I'm gonna do, assuming that the Board wants to grant this license, is to make it eas, to make it easier, I'm gonna ask for a motion, subject to various conditions and put those conditions down and then if I omit anything, we as a Board can add those conditions before the motion is formally made and, and seconded. So if somebody does wanna make a motion to grant the entertainment license and the wine and malt beverage license, I would, I would have that subject to these conditions that. that the applicants comply with all, with the requirements of all town boards, including, but not limited to, police, fire, building, conservation, natural resources, health, and DPW. And further, that the occupancy at no time exceeds 400. And further, that there be one waitress for every cabana that is rented. That all servers be tip certified. That no one be allowed to enter the premises who is under the age of 21 years. That no liquor of any kind, liquor or any other alcoholic beverages be brought onto the premises from the outside. That the applicants do not furnish any liquor to any of the guests or patrons. That there be no service of alcohol after 5:15 PM, and that all alcohol be off the table by, would you say, 5:30, Chief?
Yes, 5:30, yep.
That nobody be admitted that's carrying any kind of weapons, including but not limited to firearms. And that the applicants execute a licensing agreement with the town of Yarmouth. Would there be any other conditions that anybody can think of that we would attach to a motion to approve?
Usually we put in there that the applicants show clean and restore the site to its original condition, you know, that there's no debris or anything will be left behind. Some of those are in the sample.
I think when I said, subject to the requirements of all these other town departments, that would be a requirement of, but I can say that. I'll add that condition, that, that at the conclusion of the event, that the premises be restored to the condition they were in prior to the event.
To your point.
In all particulars.
To your point, Mr. Chairman, in terms of departments, what we will do is create sort of subconditions, so we don't, we can state departments, but police will say, this is what we want, this is what we want.
All requirements. Whatever the police require is going to be part of our approval. Whatever fire requires, whatever conservation requires in terms of fencing and so forth, they're going to have to comply with.
Okay.
And they're going to have to comply with that anyway, because we only have jurisdiction over entertainment licenses and alcohol licenses. These other boards have independent jurisdiction over these other requirements.
And I think you are facilitating the use of the site beyond the event in the, in the wine and malt license. So, you know, these conditions go to the board's charge over the site and the conditions related to the use of the site, so.
So I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, good. Off to a good start. That means that there's a motion to approve of your event, subject to the requirements that I just outlined. Is there any further discussion before we vote, Mark?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just want to, again, I think it's important to emphasize that we want this to be successful.
Yeah.
All right, the board is interested clearly in working with you to make this successful.
Thank you.
So that you can celebrate your independence in, in an appropriate way. I also want to go on record, and I think this is an expression by the board, to all the staff, all the departments, everybody that's sort of bent over backwards to come together more or less at the last minute to help pull this together. I think it just speaks to, this is the kind of town department in the town we have, where we have department heads and staff that really work hard to serve the community. And I think you saw a taste of that over the last several days. So the board really wants to let folks know how much we appreciate all that help.
Anyone else?
My only comment would be that I, I would have been more comfortable with a lower number. If the board is comfortable with the 400, I'll go along with that. But I'm just, I'm, I want this to be a good experience, and I don't want any bad surprises.
Dorcas, and then I'm going to go to Peter.
No, I'm all set.
Peter?
I, I also want to thank the Jamaican community that comes and helps all our businesses every year to keep things running. Thank you.
And the only comment I'll make before we vote, I agree with Selectman Forrest. We want this to be successful. We, we had a drive-in use committee that, while we're waiting to do the Riverwalk Park, started envisioning events like this, special events. We've had an Irish group there doing an event. I don't think we have enough of these kinds of events, to be honest with you. But when you have large groups of people, there's a lot of, it's not as simple as it looks. There's a lot of moving pieces that you have to, you have to deal with. And, and again, I, I thank staff for their facilitation of, of this event. They're helping you to, to do it the right way, and also the amount of work they did on very short notice. So we're grateful to them as well. So go, okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? So that passes unanimously. We wish you the best of luck at your event.
Good luck.
Thank you, thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Ricardo, I'll follow up with the agreement, probably by the end of the day tomorrow. And then we got to get it done by Thursday, probably, the latest. All right, thank you.
Am I, I think I'm the clerk?
I think it's him.
Peter.
I think it is. Peter is.
Here you go.
Yeah, it's Peter.
I forgot my trash.
Great job by the town on that one.
Hey, next matter is going to be the housing production plan. So anybody that's involved in that, you want to come forward?
Mary, you want to load the presentation?
We have another chair.
Of course I signed it wrong place. I'm sure.
I have to put it on U.S. page, but how can I?
Bill?
Sure. I signed in the wrong place. Can we get another copy of this, the second page?
I'm sorry. Yeah.
I'm sure they don't like to cross it out.
We can, we can cross it out and have her sign below. We'll see.
Let's go down to Dan.
By me, Mr. Chairman, you should have the housing production plan in your packet while we wait for the presentation to be loaded.
I guess, yes, it must be, yeah.
And all the information is there. There is also in the packet a letter, sort of introducing the plan and sort of its contents. That is, I don't think it's in front of the plan itself in the, in your packet. Things are quite extensive. I'm used to them digitally, so. There it is. There is a memorandum from Kathy Williams dated January 5th, 2023, indicating the housing production plan was reviewed by the planning board and accepted. And then there's another one dated July 28th, 2023, from Lorraine Doyle, Chair, Committee Housing Committee, and that explains the context of the plan itself and the purpose of the And the housing production plans are part of the housing legislation, what it does, and that's, this is in the memorandum, when you have 40Bs, which you're familiar with, we'll talk about a 40B we have on Route 28, it gives you more flexibility to guide the 40B process, because within the context of the plan, you're basically telling the developer, these are the types of things we want to achieve with your development. Without the housing production plan and under 10%, you have far less flexibility. So it's part of the legislation that the housing production plan gives you guidance in terms of ability to leverage more out of a 40B development than you would without the plan. Probably whether while we're waiting for Mary, I don't know if anybody wants to sort of intro this, or we'll get the presentation up in a minute, or?
I don't know, Mary?
All right.
Are we just waiting for the thumb drive?
I don't know if you want to take the 40B one out of the order or the letter?
No, but you know what we could do? We could do some easy stuff.
Appointments?
Yeah, well, let's do appointments. We have appointment to the Yarmouth Board of Health. We have a reappointment to the Board of Assessors.
Yep, one second. Let me just get to the right pages.
And then we can do, we can approve the minutes of August 30, 22. We could do those.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I would like to introduce Dr. Lawrence Venetia and recommend her to be, him, rather, to be appointed as a regular member of the Board of Health. This appointment is for a three-year term, which will run through October 2026.
Okay, is that a?
Did you say you were introducing?
Well, yeah, I, I did.
Is he here?
I'll make the motion.
To appoint?
I'll make the motion to appoint.
I second it, yep.
Okay, and we have a motion and a second to appoint Dr. Lawrence Venetia to the Yarmouth Board of Health for the term that Dorcas mentioned. So all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? So that passes by a 5-0 vote. And then we have a reappointment on the Board of Assessors.
I would like to make a motion to reappoint Jay Saragin as regular member on the Board of Assessors. The appointment is for a three-year term, which will run through July 2026.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? That passes by a 5-0 vote.
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Joe Sullivan as a regular member of the Board of Assessors. These appointments are for a three-year term, which will run through July of 2026.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes by a 5-0 vote. And how about the minutes of August 30, 2022? Somebody went up?
Some moved.
Okay, a motion and a second to approve the minutes of August 30, 2022. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? They pass unanimously. Trying to see if there's anything.
Mr. Chairman, could we, could we do the consent agenda as well?
I was thinking about that. I mean, sometimes the town administrator likes to move that, but it's not a requirement. Apparently, there's a donation, there's a Troop 709, D.Y. Girl Scouts, donation of a Little Free Library, Barnstable Lions Club, request of White Kane Day fundraiser, and approval of N-Star. And there's a letter of, I think from Jeff Colby, supporting the approval of N-Star. So if somebody wants to move.
I move the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Consent agenda is approved 5-0. So.
We're good.
Bill, what we've done is we've done the appointments, we've approved the minutes of August 30, and we've approved the consent agenda. Those matters are done.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ready?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Bill.
Now, you want to introduce everybody and then?
So, my name is Mary Wagan. I work for the town of Yarmouth. I've worked here for 18 years, and this is the third update of the housing production plan that I've been through. We have on our Zoom Karen Sonnaborg. She's done all of those updates for us. With us today, we have three members of the housing committee. We have Marsha Basal, Drew Kraus, and Mara Sahenich. So what I propose, Mr. Chairman, is that our consultant, Karen Sonnaborg, goes through the housing production plan via a PowerPoint presentation.
Good, thank you.
So Karen, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Are you going to show the, share a screen with, oh, there you go. Thank you very much. I want to give a warning, sometime during this meeting, our connection was a little shaky. And so hopefully that won't happen as we proceed here. Fingers crossed. But anyway, thank you for putting us on what is, I know, a very ambitious agenda for you. I'm going to try to run through this presentation quickly, so there's some time for questions and discussion. So as Mary mentioned, this is a, an update of plans that we did in 2011 and 2016. And certainly, a lot has changed since 2016. So this plan really represents an opportunity to revisit the housing dynamic in, in Yarmouth. The plan is being prepared under housing production plan requirements of the state, which are really a subset of the Chapter 40B regulations in order to give greater local control over housing. It's pretty prescriptive, the state is, about what needs to be included in a housing production plan for it to be approved by the state. For example, there has to be an executive summary, there has to be a comprehensive housing needs assessment. And this needs assessment really shows the town where we are now, where we've been, where we are now. And this stills information to get at priority housing needs. There is also a section that's required on providing challenges to producing affordable housing. I think this is in recognition that the state knows it's not a slam dunk to get housing, affordable housing produced. But it requires the town to come up with some mitigation measures that would address some of these challenges, either through the plan or through other work that the town is doing with respect to these constraints. And then it asks for housing production goals. And this really focuses on what we call the capital A affordable units, units that meet all the requirements by the state under Chapter 40B to get included in what's called a subsidized housing inventory, SHI. And then, and the housing production goals give us some direction where we want to go. And then the housing strategies really address how we want to get there, and how are we going to address the needs that were identified in the housing needs assessment. You can go on the next slide, because we're going to, so just, you know, basic housing production plan 101. If the town, if the state approves the housing production plan, and the town produces one-half of 1% of its year-round housing stock, it gets, and that's the equivalent of 57 units in Yarmouth, it gets what's called certification, or sometimes referred to as safe harbor, where it can deny what it considers inappropriate, unwanted, comprehensive permit applications without the developer's ability to appeal, and therefore deny projects that would override local zoning that are not considered assets. If the, if the, if the, if there's a production of 1% of the year-round housing stock at any calendar year, which is equivalent any calendar year, which is equivalent of 115 units, the certification or safe harbor goes for two years period of time, which is a good thing. Next slide. So what housing is capital A affordable in Yarmouth right now? Of the 11,479 year-round housing units, this is down somewhat from over 12,000 in 2010, 616 or 5.37% are included in this SHI. And this is up considerably from the 362 SHI units in 2007, 405 in 2010, and 520 units in 2015 here, certainly clearly showing steady progress. There's a current gap of an estimated 532 units to meet the state's 10% target of affordability. And just for additional information, almost 70% of the unit, SHI units are rentals, and 17 units involve 40B permitting. Next slide. So, you know, it was really the intention of this project to really provide multiple avenues to engage the public and to get some real input and diverse voices into the final product. Certainly, we looked at previous housing production plans and kind of looking at what worked, you know, what doesn't make sense anymore, should we tweak this, what additional strategies are needed. And then we also, you know, looked at the town's vision and plan and incorporated those recommendations to as great extent we could. We looked at the community preservation plan from CPC that was updated in 2021. We looked at the local comprehensive plan, which is now the town is revisiting, and we're hoping that this housing production plan will be a great asset in that planning process. We held a community housing summit on January 11th of 2022 in person to provide information on the key takeaways from the housing needs assessment, and also we broke up into small discussion groups to get the perspectives of the attendees on a wide range of questions relating to a vision for the future, as well as the specific actions that should be included in the housing plan. And then we held a virtual housing summit as well on February 3rd, you know, once again trying to tap as many people as possible into the planning process. And then we're ongoing in community housing meetings where the committee really provided input and guidance into the plan. We also issued a community housing survey last year as another means of community engagement. It should mention is, we also held another community meeting to present the draft housing plan on October 25th. Most recently, the planning, we presented the plan to the planning board on the 7th of 7th, and they endorsed the plan and amendments on January 4th of this year. So with all the information and the comprehensive needs assessment, we kind of distilled that information into indicators of need that backed up into these priorities. With year-round rentals being the top need, particularly looking at those, the most vulnerable residents in the community, but also looking at some pragmatic reasons, such as almost eight all-state subsidies for financing affordable housing are directed to rentals. So that, in order to leverage local resources and build any scale, really rentals make more sense. I mean, other considerations were that in a, in a Chapter 40B project, all units in a rental development count towards the SHI, whereas for homeownership, only the actual affordable units count usually at 25%. And then another consideration is that there are greater beneficiaries over time, as rentals tend to turn over more frequently than homeownership, among other considerations that we've added. Nevertheless, we felt that homeownership was still an important component of the town's future housing agenda for starter housing, kind of, you know, really workforce housing in some circumstances, and for empty nesters looking to downsize. As more than 16% of all residents claim some disability, the need to continue to provide special needs housing that involve modifications for health and safety reasons, as well as supportive services, should be integrated into future development. And financial technical assistance to improve housing conditions to prevent evictions, which is also identified as an important priority. So we broke down the housing strategies in these four categories. I should mention also that the Housing Production Regulations Guidelines also have some categories of strategies that must be addressed in the housing production plan, and we kind of identify the strategies under each of these categories in the introduction to the housing section of the, housing strategy section of the housing plan. So starting with zoning, certainly zoning is a powerful tool to guide new development, including incentives and mandates for public benefits, including affordable housing. Housing Choice Initiative basically moved the necessity of a supermajority vote by the planning board or town meeting on zoning, zoning bylaws that involve housing, to a simple majority vote, making it somewhat easier to get approval for zoning that will boost housing production. Under the zoning strategies, we've included revised Affordable Housing Bylaw. That bylaw was adopted in 2006, and as we know, there have been major changes in market conditions. It's time to kind of take another look, particularly with respect to the formula for calculating fees in lieu of units. Another one was to modify the AD, accessory dwelling unit requirements, and clearly the town is in the process of doing that, looking at new language for the bylaw, and that, this, this kind of support for ADUs was kind of, you know, something that we heard throughout the planning process. Allow a wider range of housing types, which basically will allow the town to address a wider range of housing needs, looking beyond the single-family home, but other types of housing, you know, including maybe, you know, group homes, top-of-the-shop housing, you know, looking at how to incentivize new development in the bylaw. amend the Cluster Development Bylaw. Current provisions should also be revisited to make it a better use, a more effective mechanism for smart growth development. Any kind of cluster or flexible development makes sense in clustering the housing and preserving open space, but the plan recommends changes for consideration. Capacity building strategies. I got to say, Yarmouth has a great structure and system for promoting affordable housing, you know, top-notch staff at the Community Development Department and real expertise and enthusiasm on part of members of the Community Housing Committee and the Affordable Housing Trust. But we stressed in the plan the continued need for community outreach and education, and I think this planning process kind of represents the kind of outreach that is, that it really kind of helps garner support for new housing initiatives. To expand the Community Housing Committee membership and update its mission, vis a vis what the mission is of the Affordable Housing Trust to really better define respective roles and responsibilities, and really requiring that the CHC have some representatives, for example, the Yarmouth Housing Authority, the Planning Board, or for example, the age-friendly community team. Update affordable housing standards. These standards basically are there to provide information to developers on what kind of the development is preferred, as well as the protocol and requirements for affordable housing. They were prepared initially in 2010, they were updated in 2013 and 2014. It's time to take another look to make sure they're still in line with this housing plan and the town's current goals. Continue to capitalize the Affordable Housing Trust. The town has put in more than $10 million of CPA money into the trust over the time the Housing Trust has been established, mostly going to the motel redevelopment program and the buy-down program, but having some funding on hand is really useful to take advantage of housing opportunities as they arise. And explore options for maintaining year-round units. Basically, this recommendation focused on ways to incentivize the transfer of properties and kind of, kind of stabilize existing owners, and includes a number of examples, like, for example, passage of a real estate transfer tax. Next slide. Housing production. So first is to continue to revitalize commercial areas with housing. Towns made great progress on this with the passage of the Village Center Overlay District, the motel bylaw, the growth incentive zone, for example, and certainly these areas are best suited for some density and mixed-use development. So the message here is really continue to bolster development in these smart locations, and as the sewer system is extended, there will be some greater feasibility of developing mixed-use and some multifamily housing in appropriate places. Continue to convert existing housing to affordability. You know, Yarmouth has been on the cutting edge of these programs for years, including buy-down program and even a rental homes program where there's a conversion and buy-down for renters with the assistance of Building Dreams. As the affordability gaps have widened, because housing prices continue to go up, the need, the gap filler also widens, and so the subsidy has been increasing. So, you know, the town needs to make some, you know, decisions, discussions about, you know, how much subsidy it's willing to put into this particular strategy at this time. Continue to promote local initiative program, comprehensive permit units. Local initiative program, often referred to as the Friendly 40B Program, means that the town and the developer agree on the basic terms and conditions of any particular development, and this is where the Affordable Housing Standards comes into the plate, because the town has these standards that want to be promoted for development, in which case the town and the developer jointly apply to the state in order to get the go-ahead to submit a comprehensive permit through the Zoning Board of Appeals. Up to 70% of the units can be reserved for those who have, live, work, or have children attending local schools in Yarmouth. So this is a useful permitting tool. And to support scattered site infill development, where development can be scattered throughout existing neighborhoods in a way that retains the, you know, single-family scale of the neighborhood, but could include some of these more diverse housing types that really, you know, that would fit into the context of the neighborhoods. You might hear sometime the issue of the missing middle, where the focus is either a single-family or a larger multifamily, but some of these smaller, more diverse housing types can also work in existing neighborhoods. And housing preservation and direct assistance strategies. Monitor the affordability of the SHI. Community Development Department maintains a database on the affordability restrictions on the all-SHI units. There is a standard affordable housing restriction in the state now, but in the past, they were all of, you know, all over the place as far as the requirements, and so when policy, when, 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 when it comes up with turnover, the hope is that the town will be able to substitute the more current, better affordable housing restriction with the former older ones. And also that, you know, the Community Development Department is very knowledgeable about all the requirements that are necessary to get the units counted on the SHI, and monitors it to make sure that they are preserved for the longest period as possible. Upgrade existing housing stock. There are, besides, the buy-down program and rental homes program does this too, because they're making improvements to the property as they're acquired and either sold or rented. But the town also has the Housing Emergency Loan Program that helps with all the improvements, and the septic pumping and repair program that has been effective, and looking into a sewer hookup program, potential with CDVG funding. Help current and prospective homeowners access housing resources. Certainly, as part of community education, this is an important thing to get the word out, so qualifying households have a shot at getting resources that they, they could find useful, and there's a whole list of these in, in the plan. And, you know, the town also maintains a ready by list with Hack as, as units turn over, which is important. And provide assistance to renters besides actual rental production, and referrals to the Housing Authority or to Hack for the Section 8, housing choice vouchers, you know, the town has been, making referrals to, for other entities for assistance of renters, like the Hands of Hope Outreach Center, for help with first and last rental payments, or secure, you know, upfront leasing payments, and then maintains a ready renters list, and then has worked on new zoning to increase the pool of eligible occupants for seasonal workers in motels, for example. So it's a matter of continuing to promote these particular programs and services. And that's, and next one. Next text. We need your approval to submit the plan to the state for review and approval. Technically, the state has a 30-day review process to make sure that the plan is- Technically, the state has a 30-day review process to make sure that the plan is complete and then a total 90-day review period. I've got to say, years ago, you could almost count when you would get the approval from the state based on the 90 days. In the last several years, it's been much, much quicker. It's been close to a month. So that's, that's been a very good signal about the state's interest in seeing communities do these plans and move forward on implementation. And then we have the plan and more information on the town's website. So that's a lot of information in one shot, but, and there is a lot more information in the, in the actual draft plan, but anyway, open up to any questions and comments.
Thank you very much. I'm going to start with somebody who can ask you more questions than you ever thought possible on a form of housing. And it's not Peter Q. Smith, it's Mark Forrest.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Karen, thank you for that presentation and thank you for the work that you've done on this plan. We very much appreciate it. I think this is one of the documents that we produce periodically that really gets in a tremendous amount of attention, a lot of analysis, a lot of numbers, a lot of numbers crunching, and we have a lot of eyes on the document. And so I think this document is terrific. I have a couple of areas where I would like to make a pitch for improvements. Let me speak in terms of the strategies, first of all. I really think that in this document, we need to make it explicit, we need to make it very, very clear that, you know, we have a vision where we're linking housing and density to infrastructure. I think it's really important that, this is a theme that we talked about in the whole discussion in the run-up on wastewater, right? We talked about the importance of making investments in wastewater so that we can make real progress in terms of affordable housing and linking our housing goals and initiatives with our wastewater improvements. So I think to some degree, as we look at housing development, particularly affordable housing development, our priority should be on helping make sure that those projects, those improvements are done in areas where there's wastewater. That should be, I mean, because part of a plan is to provide guidance to the development community, right? We're supposed to be getting the word out to the community at large that this is an area that's, that's a priority. I think we've been saying that, I think we've been, but I think we need to make it far more explicit in this document. We also, I think, want to make it very, very clear that in terms of the housing development, particularly on Route 28, we're still very concerned about the need to have sustained mixed use. And I think we need to make that abundantly clear, that we want to do housing, but we don't want to necessarily create ghettos. We want to create housing that's connected to services and uses that helps sustain a certain quality of life. Now, I understand these are goals, you don't always get everything that you want, but I don't see any reason why we shouldn't be explicit about it. So I would like to see that, that reflected in the document. I do think it's important that we reassure residents of Yarmouth that while we need housing, we also want to discourage open spaces. We want to discourage development, particularly in areas where there's valuable land, particularly from a water supply point of view. As those people that have been watching our meetings will know that we've spent a lot of time talking about Zone Ones, Zone Twos, our wellfields, protecting them. And so it shouldn't surprise anybody that, I would think in a document like this, we'd make it very, very clear that we should be avoiding encouraging high-density development in areas near our wellfields. And certainly, it's certainly only under the exception if there's infrastructure. I don't see any reason why we can't be more clear on these things, because these are things that we've talked about as a board. We've sort of laid out there. I'd like to see the document be more reflective of that. The other thing that I'd like to see we can put on as a list of things to do in terms of strategies is I honestly believe as a community, we need to pay closer attention to the Airbnb phenomenon and the level of displacements that's taking place in terms of the year-round housing stock. I want to share with my colleagues on the board this editorial that was in the Boston Globe not too long ago. And the headline is "The Sharks Threatening Cape Cod Don't Have Fins." And the editorial made it very, very clear that what's happening is, is that there are companies and other trusts sort of engaged in purchasing year-round property, year-round rental property in fairly large measure, and shrinking the inventory of year-round rentals in year-round housing. And that's one of the factors that's driving up the market. Now, the editorial goes on to lay out some recommendations, but I don't think we necessarily need to go there because they're largely addressed to the legislature and getting more tools to help communities. But I do think that it would be incumbent on us to at least invest some funds to study the phenomenon. I'm not saying, you know, poor you, Mary Wagon, you, if I could clone you, maybe we could find a way to study this phenomenon. But I think there may be a value to invest in some dollars to at least monitor, study, assess this phenomenon. I would put that as an item to add on our list of things to do, that in the very near future, we invest some resources, whether it's with the Donahue Institute, which we've used before, there are other analysts and others that can help us, maybe Karen can help us. The point is, is that I really think that we need to pay closer attention to this phenomenon because it's, as the Globe, Boston Globe editorial said, that, you know, we have a phenomenon here that's eating away at our, at our affordable housing inventory. The final item is, I guess, a little bit more controversial, and it relates to the Forest Road development. You know, there's reference in the document to a plan, a project, and I forget exactly where it is, but there's also a timeline, and it makes reference to, you know, a town meeting action. But my understanding is that there was a subsequent town meeting action, which basically rejected that prior town meeting action. So there's been some, so I mean, if we're, if we're going to make reference to a town meeting approval of a project, there was also a subsequent town meeting rejection of a project. So I think, I think it's a little bit, I would prefer that we not make reference to that development, or if we do, that it's far more accurate, that the town meeting did reject that development.
Page, page 49, that's the narrative. That's what you're talking about. You'd like to see that updated. It's proposed projects, it's two paragraphs for Forest Road. And it does not get into the, it talks about the project getting a million dollars, being awarded a million dollars of community preservation money, and then that was retracted. But it doesn't, it doesn't talk about anything else.
I guess my concern is in the housing production plan, including a project that interprets we endorse it or support it. There is a discussion of a timeline in the Table Number Six, which it talks about a town-owned Forest Road property and a town meeting action. That's incomplete. There were subsequent town meeting actions that basically rejected.
Page Six.
Page, is a table on page six of the housing production?
Sixty-eight, is that the, page sixty-eight, is that the table you're looking at?
I'm looking at the table that's on my version of the production plan, number six, page six.
Page six.
Yep. So my request, my final request would be to delete the Forest Road reference. And so those are my recommendations for text and changes. Ninety-nine percent of this document, I completely endorse and support. I completely want, I want to show incredible support and enthusiasm for the, the work of the committee, the work of staff, all the collaboration, the tremendous work that Karen did in putting into this. But I think those are my comments. That's, I would like to see those, those additions, those three points addressed in the report, Mr. Chairman.
Five, five points.
Okay, thank you.
They're good, they're good.
Did he forget anything?
They were all different ideas or concerns than mine, and that's the beauty of having a board. I have to say that this topic deserves more than just a cursory review by this board. This is way too much information to be handed and too complex an issue for us to grab a really complete understanding of in one night. So to, to present a plan and then to have us signing off on it in one night, to me, seems rushed and ill-informed. Because it's so important and we all want to create a way forward where we can address these important issues. I just don't feel like I'm prepared to do that, having a packet handed to me late in the week. So that would be my first comment. Quick question. You've obviously done this as part of a process. Is there some time component that is pressing that this needs to get done?
So I'll let you know that the big push is to update this when the new census data comes out. So that's your timeframe.
When would that be roughly?
That's in like eight more years. So we don't, we don't want to wait that long, but there is no time. We don't have an updated plan right now. So that means we're not, if we brought in, if we brought on 57 units in one year, we would not qualify for safe harbor. The only prospect that that's going to happen is if Forest Road goes forward, that's, they're thinking 45 units plus another project at the same time within 12 months. So you do have plenty of time to look at, it is a dense document. It has a lot of information in it. So, right, we don't get penalized?
The only penalization is not having any leverage because we don't have a plan.
It's better that we have a plan. Right now, you have a Chapter 40B coming forward. It's not a local initiative program, Chapter 40B. It looks better when, you know, we're talking to the state right now about it, it's later on in your agenda. It's better that they know that we're working on the HBP and we're near finalizing it. It's even better if you approve it, do you know what I mean? But it, it, that doesn't, it, it, it just adds to all the things that we're doing is to have a certified plan. You have a full-time staff person, you have Affordable Housing Trust, you have a Community Housing Committee.
No, this, this idea.
Keep going forward.
Makes a lot of sense. It's just, to me, it seems very tight and compact and overly detailed and just a lot to grab onto at a very short period of time. This, to me, is almost, is, is important enough to warrant workshop meetings for us to really talk about housing.
Yep.
And to talk about where we want it and where we don't want it and what kinds of housing we want. You're talking about bylaw changes. You know, all of those things should be done in a thoughtful, laid-out process so that it's all working together and not just haphazardly, you know, attacking different pieces without any real goal or plan at the end of the line. And that's my concern, is sometimes I feel like we try to tackle it in as many ways as possible, but it doesn't seem like it's a cohesive, organized plan. And that's not being critical of this particular iteration. There's just a lot here that I have not been able to grab, get my mind around yet. Just some general concerns. You know, we talk about workforce housing, and I think that's a great idea. We all want workforce housing. But we don't have any control, once we create the housing, do we have any control over who actually gets it and whether it's Yarmouth people that are getting it?
Right.
And what happens to it when they move?
Yep, initial, initial lease-up is the only time you can have a local preference.
Right.
So 70% of the units can have a local preference for people, for households that live here, work here, have a child in our school system.
We are putting millions of dollars into this effort, you know, is it, and this is just off the top of my head, but is it conceivable that the town would do something? That the town has control over, that the town can choose who goes in, that they're workforce people that are actually working here, that when they go, we make sure that a workforce person from Yarmouth?
It's an interesting thought. If you want the units to go on the subsidized housing inventory, that's a challenge. However, let's say you, you, you create 10 units, right? They're rentals. 25%, well, it's going to go to three units, are going to have to be, you know, affordable. Okay. Well, what do you do with the rest? Right? They're not going, I don't think the state's going to disqualify them if you make them workforce. Do you know what I'm saying?
I do.
As long as you have the capital A affordable ones meet the state's standards.
Okay.
The problem is, is that this town, you know, receives federal money. That triggers, that triggers, you know, protection for certain classes, right? The town cannot discriminate. So you just have to, you just have to make that housing, you can't say, oh, it has to be somebody who's working because now you're discriminating against people who are retired or disabled, right, and aren't social security, right? So you just have to, you have to make a variety of sizes. You can restrict that housing with respect to rent so that your local market, your local workforce can afford it. So there's ways that you can incentivize you have a local workforce in there, but you can't prohibit.
Oh, if you didn't use federal funding for that particular project, right?
Just because, I mean, we get Community Development Block grant money and.
Right.
I mean, I've been told, and Bill can probably correct me if I'm wrong, that any municipality that participates in these federal programs, it just is a blanket requirement for the town. You, you, you have to have that base level of standard for your actions.
I guess my concern is that we call it workforce housing, but is it really? I mean, can we definitively prove that it's really answering a need here in town for our workers, for our residents, you know, for our businesses? And if it isn't, maybe we need to look at other ways of attacking the problem.
What I find dealing with households on a day-to-day basis is people, once they have a job nearby, they don't want to move. Do you know what I mean? Like, people don't, commuting isn't as popular as it used to be, right? It just isn't. So I, I, I deal with a lot of people that need housing, and when I say, okay, there's a lottery in Salem, they're like, nope, I don't want to move from the area. So there is this, and it might be a local culture, people get glued to this area and they want to stay. And I quite honestly don't get a lot of calls from off Cape looking for housing on the Cape, unless it's somebody who has family here or grew up here and moved away and wants to come back.
One of the components is.
I'm going to write down that, you know, you're basically trying to match your businesses with housing.
I am, because that's, you know, that's what we're speaking to. When we, if we're going to talk workforce housing, let's really talk about it and make sure that it addresses the town's needs and the businesses' needs.
And not everything in this plan has to produce a unit that goes on the subsidized housing inventory.
Right.
Do you know what I mean? You just have to, if, if you put a resource into that development, you need to make sure that you're not discriminating in any way. That's my only cautionary tale.
I'm glad, I, you have several components. Rentals obviously seems to be the main component of our affordable offerings here in town, understandably, because the cost of housing is just so inflated right now. And I'm concerned that that's still a component because the bang for the buck in that particular criteria is just woefully inadequate. You know, if you're going to buy a house, you're putting tens of thousands of You know, if you're going to buy a house, you're putting tens of thousands of dollars into something for one unit. And it just, to me, doesn't seem to equate with the, the cost-benefit ratio. You know, I understand the desire to do starter housing and potentially younger people, family type of housing, I understand that. But, you know, when you're talking about nickels and dimes and dollars that are going into this type of effort, you know, the one criticism I hear time and time again when it comes to these types of programs is why are we subsidizing other people's purchase of a home when we didn't have it? And I realize there's a balancing there, but it's, it's a legitimate point. You know, how many hundreds of thousands of dollars are we going to put into that type of effort when the better bang for the buck isn't a rental type of scenario? And maybe I don't have all the information. I'm, I'm the first one to concede that, and that's why I want further conversations with, what's your justification for that? What's been your success with that? What have been the problems in the past? Because we've lost certain deeded rights to homes that we've purchased in the past and we've made mistakes that have cost money and have we rectified those? And it's just, it's a significant amount of money. It's taxpayer money. It's, we have a responsibility to the residents of this town to make sure that the money is being used appropriately. So it's a concern I have. I was, I see it's part of your, your breakout in terms of planning going forward, but I think there's a recognition even by your board that it's just not as practical as it once was. And maybe there's a way we can address that. But I'd like to know more as to why we're even doing it, you know, and what the success rate has been. You know, has it been a boon to the particular neighborhoods that we've put these houses into? You know, I'd love to hear from people who've actually benefited from this and, and, you know, how it has changed their lives. You know, as part of educating not only this board, but the population that's paying for it in this town, because all I'm hearing is the opposite of why are we doing that? You know, because you didn't do it for me. I, I agree with Selectman Forrest's observation that if we're going to consider any of these types of things, they should be in conjunction with a wastewater project. And the timing should be such that it works in conjunction with a wastewater project. You know, we're going to be talking about a 40B development later. I'm curious as to whether or not they're going to hold off until the sewer is completely all set, or are they planning on going forward and then doing something in the meantime? This is just part of smart development. And, you know, we certainly want to be, affordable housing has to be a component of that smart development, but one thing that troubled me is that you, you talked about redeveloping, revitalizing commercial areas with this kind of housing, and that's just the opposite of what I'm thinking about. I don't want to be spending or losing commercial development in this town to affordable housing. I just don't. We are struggling to pay our tax bills here in town. We are struggling with the commercial base that we have in this town and to be losing those types of sites to affordable housing, although I appreciate the infrastructures there. I get that piece. But it's not what we envisioned. It's not what we had planned. And, and we're talking about hotel redevelopment, and I get that. It's all on 28, isn't it? So maybe, you know, maybe there's some room for that. You've done two great projects thus far. You really have. Two really fundamental, strong projects that offer all the amenities that we were hoping. But how far did we go with this? Are we going to, once we through searing down 28, are we going to be dealing with five, six, 10 of these affordable 40B developments on 28 simply because they can do it? You know, that's not what we wanted. At least certainly wasn't what I wanted. I don't think it's what the town wants. So I think, you know, purported developers coming in should know that, you know, that it runs counter to the economic health of this town to be losing these types of sites to housing that costs us money and don't bring in money, don't defer any of the tax base. So that's a concern I have, and it's, if that's, if that's one of the priorities that you have in the plan, I have, I personally have an issue with that. Can I ask you, how many communities in this state actually meet to 10%? Do we know?
It's mostly urban areas.
Mostly urban areas.
And they're well over 10%.
So-
That's why the, that citizens petition to revoke Chapter 40B-
Didn't pass.
Didn't pass. Because the cities, the urban voters said, well, hey, we've got 27% here. Everybody has to have a share. So-
So of the non-urban sites, I mean-
I would, I would have to analyze that, but-
It just seems like we are under an anvil just waiting to hit us in the head every single-
You know what I mean? Look, I try not to focus too much on that, that percentage, that number, because the program keeps us going. We keep making progress.
It keeps us going, but it, it always seems to stay somewhat stagnant, the percentage that we're at, and we're always under the gun. We, we just can't seem to get out of that unless we want to build 600 units somewhere in town.
Yeah. That was my first idea. That didn't go over well.
You know?
That was, that was 17 years ago.
I'm not looking at all of this. I'm not necessarily saying that maybe that isn't the way to go here, because if we're going to continue to lose commercial development, we have to take a real serious look at this. You know, if we need to do this type of housing, where should we do it? Where is it best located? I don't think it's 28, but if we have to do it, and maybe if we have to do it at these types of numbers that they're suggesting, we have to have a better plan about how we're going to incorporate this into town. You know, we have these things like Forest Road come at us and, you know, it just creates all kinds of issues because nobody saw it coming and, you know, the infrastructure maybe isn't there or the, the education component isn't there. We haven't been able to fully explain it to a neighborhood that it's going into. We don't have the types of other resources that need to be there. We have to worry about all the schooling pieces that go with that, the policing, the fire, all of that. I just think we need to plan this better, and that's not on you. That's on us, and that's on us together. We have to do a plan, like, if it's workshops, let's do it, but let's figure this out and see, this is where we're going to do it in the future, but stay away from 28. Or, you know, if, if it has to be on 28, then, you know, mitigate it in some way.
Yes. Right.
You know?
I just, I get a lot of phone calls from developers looking on, at property on Route 28.
Yeah. I think we're going to see a lot of that.
We're going to see it. How do, how, you know, how do we get them away from using Chapter 40B and using a local program that will get us what we want?
And we have to offer places where we can do it.
So-
Right?
And it worked. The motel bylaw worked. It, it deflected a couple of-
Yep.
Projects and properties away from Chapter 40B into something that we controlled. We can do that again. We can do that again. Now that, now that searing's coming, maybe we have to-
Yeah, and, you know, maybe that even helps us to, you know, discover where we want the next phasing of searing to go, to, to address some of these issues.
I was just thinking, is that all locked in, like the, the phasing of the searing? Or is that, okay?
Well, it's fluid. DEP has us looking at water quality and abeyments, and that may adjust the phasing as well. But, you know, this is certainly something that's of that ilk in terms of importance. But, you know-
Can I just mention something here?
Yeah.
Interject something? You know, I think, as I went through in this slide presentation, you know, we went through a major civic engagement process, including a couple of workshops, that asked a lot of questions that really led to, you know, the results of this particular plan, including locations. I think what's useful is even after the plan is approved, there continues to be opportunities to do workshops, engage the public as you keep moving forward. So it, you know, with this plan, it doesn't mean that there won't be further discussions and working out and engagement by all sorts of folks in town.
And Karen, that's a great comment, and I think that's what my bottom line is, is that this is a good, really solid start. And it lays out, you know, what we need to do, but it doesn't tell us how to get there. And we need to really do some work here to try to figure out where best in our town to incorporate this type of use. And educate. You know, you've got those beautiful buildings on 28, and you would not believe the amount of comments I get about freeloaders living on 28 at our dime. And I know, that's awful. That's a terrible sentiment. And yet, that's the impression that's out there. You know, I've, I've heard it time and time again, that, you know, why are we inviting these types of people to come here? And that needs to be countered, and that needs to be educated so that people truly understand the types of people that we are welcoming into this town and providing housing for. I've tried to do that, but I real, I don't have the type of information that I should have to do that. I thank you all for the work. I really do. This is a really helpful piece. I just think it has to be the beginning of the conversation and not something that we just check off and say, yep, we're on board, here you go. And that's kind of what we've done in the past, isn't it? And then just handed it right back to you and said, okay, you, you figure out how to get us there.
I think that this, this round, and I have to credit Mark for this, we did much more community engagement. I think you came to one of the workshops. We, we really did do way more community engagement than we, we ever have. And I think, you know, I'm fine, you know, doing workshops. If you guys want to do workshops, you know, come an hour early from your meeting and we'll spend that first hour of your time and go through chapter by chapter.
I just want to clearly understand how we're going to do it. How, and how we can do it so that it's-
I think we've got some, yeah.
It fits well in this town.
Yeah.
And I don't know how we're going to do it. I don't.
I want to go to Bill for a minute. He had his hand up. I don't know really why exactly, but-
Just the 10% issue. I think some of the things people have concerns about, the 10% is a percentage of overall housing stocks. Every time you build market rate units, you lose ground on the affordable. And that kind of chasing the 10% is as the economy picks up and as you start spreading infrastructure, market rates are going to be built, and then you're losing ground on the affordable. So you never really catch up. I mean, a lot of people in the industry think it's arbitrary.
Yeah.
And, you know, I, I've been involved in it, and we were able to achieve over the 10% in a community, and it was a strategy related to housing rehabilitation, new construction, and 40R. But that's really what people have a problem with, with the 10%. It, it, it just, you know, you finish, you do a great job in affordable housing, somebody builds 45 units, you're 45 units behind.
So we-
But with discretionary zoning, if you require that 10% of the units have to be affordable, you at least keep up.
Well, at 600 units or around where we are, all we have to do, we, it's hard to catch up. So I'm, I'm just commenting on, in my experience in other communities.
Yeah.
And the second thing is, state doesn't look at some of the older apartment stock, like in the 1970s, that we tried to go in and say, can we do a program like a huge rehab, turn it into affordability? Because one of the towns I worked in, the market rate and the affordable rate were pretty much the same, because depending upon which of the statistical areas you used, we were, had Boston, those numbers are very low. So we were already renting in the area at market rate, at the affordable rate. But unless we were, did a project and put them on the SHI, then these apartment complex people were saying, I'd like to see some money in here to do a project, but there, you know, you could go into a large apartment complex built in the 70s, and if you can get money to gut the whole thing, then you can put those units on affordability. We had about 800 units in this town that I worked in that we, they were renting at affordable rates, but they weren't on the list. So we were over the 10%, but they, those 800 units would have locked us and put us well over. So I think taking a look, there's housing rehab programs, but going into an old apartment complex and getting a commitment that, you know, you're going to rent the units at this, I'm not quite sure if there's really a, a good program for that right now. And there's a lot of stuff built in the 70s. There's a lot of apartment complexes built around then that, you know, as, that could use a lot of work that, given some tenant fit-ups and upgrade and utilities, could put everything on the SHI. So I, I think that's one of the programs. And, and it's, the other thing is, it's a continuum. When we talk about first-time home buyers and everything else, if seniors don't have a place to go, they are going to lock up the end of the housing cycle. They are going to lock up, you know, the higher end or the moderate end houses and basically, but they have a difficult, you know, when you're going into, you know, assisted living, you're paying $6,000 a month. And they have a Cape that they're paying utility bills, and they probably already paid their mortgage. There's no reason to leave.
So that's a great point, because in this, in this report, I, it almost felt like you were downplaying the need of seniors, that it wasn't as critical as other needs in the town. And I was surprised by that. Because I, I was thinking the same thing.
You need to, you need to, so the person who is going to take over that half a million-dollar house that seniors own is stuck in the lower house who pushes the, in, you know, the other person. So the first-time home buyer is in that same continuum. So you, you need to find some answers for seniors. I mean, my own mother and other people that I know, they're not leaving their house when they're paying utility bills and there's not really a mortgage there. There's no reason to. How, how do you get them in a position so that that end of the market opens up and then, you know, there's more availability? Because we have 9,000 seniors in town, and I'm sure that some would rather be in a situation where they don't have to care for that house, but it doesn't make any fiscal sense for them to leave a home where they most likely don't have a very low mortgage and not a lot of expenses.
And many of them would like to stay here in Yarmouth, like you said, but we don't have a lot of senior housing stock to offer them, and it's certainly not in great condition, the stuff that we do have.
Well, Simpkins School is 55 plus.
Simpkins is beautiful. But Long Pond, that definitely could use some help.
They're just, developments that we've done recently, they wouldn't have been as competitive if they were 55 plus. Do you know what I mean? The, 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 the two, you know, gray fields that we redeveloped on Route 28, one was blighted, one was extremely old. You know, we wanted them, we, we, we made a decision, the town made a decision to go and be aggressive and get those done. If we'd made them 55-plus developments, it would have been, we would have lost funding cycles year after year after year. We would have, one of them got funded in year one, one of them got funded in year two. So-
That would be an interesting conversation, because we don't, I, I'm not aware of that. And-
Yeah.
I think certainly the people in the town would like to know that and know why we're not focusing on that. But I, I think if we had more to offer them, that might free up the glut. But anyway, I, I've taken up way too much time here, but I just wanted to say thank you for the work that you have done. I'm sorry if some of my remarks seem critical. I am supportive of housing. I really am. And especially workforce housing, especially senior housing, but-
I'm glad for your interest, Dan. I really am. I, I'm very, very happy.
I just would like to understand it more, and I'd like the town to have a more directed plan in terms of how to implement, because right now it just seems like it's a plan, but, you know, I, I don't see any road to get us from A to B. And it seems like that's been the course for quite a while now. And we get these haphazard developments that come in that we can't control.
All right, I'm going to go to Darkish now.
Well, a lot of it, it's already been said before by both Selectman Forrest and Morgan. But Forest Road jumped right out at me when I saw that. I'm thinking to myself, we haven't really even heard about this project formally yet. How- How can we have this being put forward in a plan? So I have significant concerns about that being in there. And of course, we heard tonight from the public, that the public does as well. It kind of looks like we've rubber-stamped something that we haven't even had an opportunity to discuss. The other thing was that, in my driving around town, one of the things I see quite a bit of are abandoned properties. You know, like, I don't know the numbers, but it seems like there's a pretty big number of, I don't know if they've failed to pay their taxes, I mean, you'd have to, like, get out weed whackers to be able to walk into the properties. I mean, they are clearly abandoned, nobody's living there. And has any, has there been any discussion about what to do there? And it might be less...
Just on Route 28. Just on Route 28. But you're talking about residential homes.
All over the place. You know, like, there's just seems to be a significant number of homes out there. I don't know if on the tax rolls, for instance, there's information about homes that they haven't been, you know, that they haven't been paying taxes. I mean, there are a number of homes out there that look like they've just been abandoned, that, you know, if we could take it back and we could rehab it, and then turn it around and offer it to, you know, it could be almost like affordable housing that's happening all over town, and not putting, and not putting any strain on any one particular neighborhood. So I'd like to see something about that, or a discussion about that in the plan.
Actually, there, in the plan, when they, looking at tax- for-closed properties, and converting those to affordable housing. So it is in, it is in the strategy on making suitable public property available for affordable housing, because it makes sense to do that.
So... As Selectman Horgan said, there's an awful lot in here, and I'm not surprised. I mean, I did read it.
But so, so I do have to, I do have to say that we, when we have a community partner who's willing to accept acquisition funds to create affordable housing, they've gone out and bought problem properties and rehab them, at great expense to themselves. It's usually a true charitable organization that, you know, people are working, volunteering their time. For the town to do that, that starts to get into, like, some procurement issues, because now we own the property, and how do we dispose of it, and how do we...
RP, baby.
Yeah, so that, there might, there hasn't been any progress that for a while, because our local community partners are maxed out. They've hit their capacity limit.
In other communities, there are other tools that are created in order to help sustain that. When I worked in the manager's office in Provincetown, we created the Lower Cape Community Development Corporation, where it took abandoned property, rehabbed the property, put it back into use. But those are decisions communities can make. We could embrace the idea of a CDC for Yarmouth, and then we could conceivably use some resources to help provide some modest level of capitalization, but the organization would need to get the, do the fundraising and a lot of work on its own. That's what's, one of the things that I think it's missing in the Mid-Cape, is having that kind of capacity. On the other hand, as Mary Wagon had mentioned, there are ways to work with partners. You know, we've done that in the Affordable Housing Trust. We've worked with partners to develop properties and then get those properties utilized. And we've utilized resources available to the town to help sustain that. So, you know, one way, there are multiple ways, there's, what I would argue is, the more capacity you want to create in this area, the better, right? More resources to the Affordable Housing Trust, that's great. More partnerships with other organizations, that's great. Creating a CDC that's very Yarmouth-focused, and that's, and in some cases, CDCs have targeted blighted properties in particular neighborhoods or in particular communities, and there's no reason why that's something that couldn't be nurtured. The question's going to be ultimately, in looking at a CDC, will it be able to stand on its own two feet without a lot of help from, from a municipality? And that's the question that would have to be assessed. But there are other communities utilizing other tools to focus precisely on what you're talking about.
CDCs for, you know, a smaller town on its own is dicey, because you need a certain, you know, threshold of projects to generate the operating cost to keep you afloat, or the donations. And so that's why in smaller towns, these regional CDCs have become...
Right. That's why we created the Lower Cape Community Development Corporation.
Exactly.
Because that is a regional CDC, it covers an entire area. Although if you add up the amount of population that it serves, it is not a significant difference in terms of the Mid-Cape. But these are the kinds of things, I mean, what it took to do that was, you know, a local Board of Selectmen and other municipal officials coming together in a regional area to help nurture something like that. But it's all about capacity building and having the political support to do it.
All right, so I put that on the list, how to deal with abandoned properties. You can see I'm puzzled by it, so...
Those were only my comments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'm not going to repeat everything that the other selectmen have said, but I'm in general agreement with their remarks. I think Selectman Forrest raised some very good points. And the first one is that we've got to link housing with infrastructure. If you recall, when the presentations were made about wastewater, there were diagrams about development down the center of the Cape, and the density of that development, and how it led to the wastewater problem. And I don't, I don't think we can forget that. That overly dense development can impact wastewater. And if you have, you know, linkage to a wastewater treatment system and you're developing, that's a lot different than if you're using, you know, enhanced Title V systems that may or may not address the nitrogen loading of the particular development. So I think that's a good point. I don't know if it was Mark or Dan that raised the point, but we don't want to see 28 turn into a housing corridor. That's a commercial district, that's our commercial district, that's where our commercial redevelopment has to occur. And the village overlay zoning envisioned mixed-use housing, envisioned storefronts with apartments over, which would be attractive, as well as providing housing. But just, I mean, I can just see the average tourist driving down Route 28, and the parent saying to the kid, well, this is another senior housing development. I mean, our life's blood is tourism, like it or not. I've heard all these other ideas over the years, from even before I was on the board, from other selectmen about, you know, this is going to become an area where there's going to be light industry and all this other stuff. It's never happened, and I don't think it's ever going to happen, because everywhere you turn, there's water. That's our environment. And that water replaces, it places restrictions on what we can do, number one. And number two, it's an attraction, it's an attraction to, for people to come here and vacation here and spend money here. So I want to see mixed-use development on the Route 28 corridor, not more freestanding housing projects.
Can I just add a comment, Mr. Chairman? I think it's great that we're making this point abundantly clear. I think the burden is on us, however, though, to develop the strategies to do that, because otherwise, we're going to get the other things. I mean, there are multiple developments going on and planned, and we're going to talk about one, that sort of go down a certain path. It's going to be up to us as a town to figure out what are the strategies that we can deploy so that we're getting the housing that we want.
And the other point that Mark raised, that I'm very sensitive to, is that we have to protect our public water supply. We've got a lot of problems already. We have wells that are shutting down, we have PFAS. We have to be very, very careful where we develop and what the density is of those developments as it impacts our water, our public water supply. This comes to basic survival and health, really fundamental issues that we have to protect. If we don't protect our public water supply, we're all going to be in some serious trouble. There is no other source of water other than the aquifer itself. And the environment, over the years, on the Cape, and I use the term advisedly, has been abused. I mean, there hasn't been sufficient regulation, there has been uncontrolled development, there has been development that's been too dense in certain areas, there's been, you know, we've had a lot of dysfunctional septic systems that, we've had property that were built in marshes, filled marshes, that were, where we have wastewater going into rivers and streams and ponds and places that never would be able to be built upon today. But they're grandfathered, so to speak, the issues there, the problems there, the contaminations there, the pollution's there. So the other thing is, Selectman Horgan says he needs more time to, oh, well, before I say that, there's concern among all the board members, and I include myself, with the Forest Road project, that we don't know enough about that project, I think, to approve a housing plan that includes that development. We have tried, and you'll see later on when we reach that on the agenda tonight, we've tried incessantly to get them to come in here and give us an update and give us a progress report, and encourage them to conduct public forums as to what's going to happen there. And by and large, nothing, nothing has really happened. All we got in our last response was an incomplete RFP that was started back in, I think, 2022. And a commitment that there is going to be a public meeting, perhaps sometimes this month, in August, but we still, we still don't know what's going to happen there, or what the level of planning is. So I don't think anybody in the board's comfortable with approving a plan with that component in it. I'm certainly not. I think there's just too many unanswered questions. And there's, as Mark said, there's other questions about impacts of town votes, and we've asked our town council to study this in depth, and we're waiting to hear back as to what the legal status of that property is. I'm not saying there's a problem, I'm just saying that there's certain people in the public that have voiced concern about it, and we're trying to get a comprehensive answer to those concerns. So my suggestion would be to put this matter on again for a further agenda after the boards had a chance to digest this information and to go through this material. And I'm waiting to hear from my members on that, but I will thank you for all your hard work. I really appreciate you being here tonight, and it was a very, very fine presentation. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So do we want to defer on the vote?
I think so. I think in deference, I mean, if Selectman Horgan needs more time to digest the document and spend more time with it, I'm very comfortable with that.
Dorkus?
I agree with that, and I'd like to see that the Forest Road piece, I'd feel more comfortable in how I'd vote regarding the plan if, on that. So if you could come back to us with letting us know.
Let's think about a workshop in September.
Okay, that'll be good.
Yeah, but I think you're getting a clear message from the board that we want to see the Forest Road project deleted from the plan.
And, yeah, and you, I think you're going to have an opportunity to learn more from the Housing Authority on August 14th. You're going to, you're going to...
Well, let's be clear, we haven't got any confirmation from them in any form or manner that that's being held, there's been none of that information.
I know for a fact, because I had a dialogue with our town administrator, Bob Brittenhour, who's not here tonight. I said, look, we're getting all kinds of calls and emails about the status of that development. I said, I want a specific communication to them saying, first of all, are you going to be here on August 1st? And if not, when are you going to be here? And also, when specifically can you start having some public forums? I mean, it was, it was a very detailed inquiry that he made of them, and as far as I know, the response was just basically that, we're working on an RFP.
It's actually in the memo that I gave you the response. The issue is that we're helping them set up the use of the center for the 14th, but usually when you have a hearing or a meeting like that, you're giving notification 14 days in advance, and today's the first. So we really don't want to see a meeting that notification is going out five days in advance, or three, or whatever. So from our perspective, we try to give notice sufficient. So we are helping them use the center for the 14th, but we haven't seen a notice or...
What I'd like to recommend is if we could just hold this discussion for when that item comes up on the agenda, because the next item is the Matta Key Village.
Correct.
I'm just throwing out September. That's coming back in September.
All right. Thank you so much.
And I'm staying for everything else.
Okay, we're going to go on to comments for proposed 40B, Matta Key City Village Apartments' Revised Plan. And I am going to ask our Assistant Town Administrator if he would start this discussion off for us.
Sure. If you remember, Mr. Chairman, there were two plans. There was a plan where there was a residential building built in front of a laundry, and the developer worked very closely with the department heads to basically get to a point where we realized that wasn't the best approach. It was very condensed in the beginning of the site, and the size of the laundry building really took up a lot of air. So they came back with a plan which is in the back of this attachment, which is a commercial building in the front, and then the residential building, which the elevations and everything else are in another document. We didn't want to repeat all the documents, because Mr. Busby at Mass Housing has a lot of those. So what we did is use most, if not all, of the comments from the departments and boil it down into more of an executive summary. Our intent with the letter from the board is to basically say, here is our guidance generally as it relates to some of the specific comments received, because you were not the Zoning Board of Appeals, so we're not at the stage where you need to talk about stormwater and drainage and all of that specificity. And then within that context, what the letter tries to do, and also the comments, and the comments are the same kind of comments you've seen in the past, there's, we're not specifically talking about, you know, replace these windows, or this site plan, we're talking about generally how we would like the development to proceed. But the letter goes to the extent that while 40B allows certain waivers of zoning, and zoning has certain standards of parking and play areas and things like that, we believe, according to this letter, it is not about zoning, it is about the standards for decent and equitable housing, that is, you should have enough parking, you should have enough play area irregardless of the zoning ordinance. And there's dozens of different industry standard manuals that would say X number of parking spaces per unit and things like that. So our guidance to the state is, if we go through a process of waivers, and we really don't know the specificity of the plan now, we're not going to say, we're reviewing this, and this is the definitive one. Obviously, it evolves as we move forward. That as we go through the plan, make sure you create a housing project that provides decent and equitable housing with the amenities and the infrastructure necessary to support that housing. So that's the letter. And then when you get to the document itself, summary, conditions, and narrative, essentially pretty much the same as what you've seen. Development Equity and Design, it talks about that issue I just talked about. Development equity and design, it talks about that issue I just talked about, is where waivers are sought for local regulation, there's projects that employ reasonable industry standards from which site plan can provide the supporting infrastructure and development that's equitable. Access for emergency response, there is a concern by the fire department that the buildings are 11 feet of separation, and they want to be able to have sufficient staging area, and 11 feet separation is difficult with that. They typically like 360 degrees, but really trying to get a pumper or ladder into those situations is somewhat difficult when it's constrained. Site planning, industry standards, parking. So if we were to assume that parking would be part of the waiver process, at least we would want to make sure that whatever the industry standard for parking is provided. Integration of commercial use, while we applaud, you know, the developer for looking at the laundry as something that consumed the site, and, and also for providing commercial use. I mean, the discussion we just heard tonight on containing, maintaining commercial use, we just want to make sure that there isn't competition between parking spaces for the commercial users and, and the residential users. I mean, typically, when you have a commercial use and if there's, let's say, a restaurant, people are returning from work and finding that the people in the restaurant are occupying their spaces. So we want to make sure that, that both, we have that mixed-use density, but mixed-use opportunity, but also that there's enough parking to facilitate that. And our attorney brought up, they said, you just want to make sure the commercial use is commensurate with a 40B, that a commercial use as a primary use shouldn't be getting facilitation, and I'm not quoting him from 40B for waivers. So it's really talking to the developer as we move forward to say, what is a commercial use? How does it relate to the, the exist, the proposed residential use? And how do we make sure there's enough infrastructure to support both? And that's what integration of commercial uses gets to. Municipal experience and expectations, as we said tonight, there have been some clear examples of positive affordable housing developments. In fact, the community development director on the 13th, when the Mass Housing representative came up for a tour, arranged a tour of those projects, all we're asking for there is, if we can do it, you can do it. I mean, that is, if other developers can do that type of housing, we'd just like to see that same type of housing, to sort of commit to those kind of standards on housing that we've seen. And those include some of the things they're talking about, parking and play area. Traffic circulation, this is a common, you know, issue that you want to make sure that as you're queuing off of Pine onto 28, that it's not blocking lanes, you know? When you have a corner lot like that and you're coming out onto 28, you know, at times congested at peak, you know, how do you arrange your lanes? Usually, your egress from your parking lot is further away from the intersection, so you can get in behind the stack and you're not coming into the stack closer. So there's a lot of, there's a few things in traffic circulation we like to make sure of, and there's a curb cut in the front, and the developer doesn't show that they're going to use that, which is fortunate, because you don't want a curb cut next to a side road, because people come out, one person takes a left, one person takes a right, and they find out where the center line is. So, so I'm, we're fortunate that the developer is really not looking at using a curb cut, but we want to make sure that we make that. Future considerations, we've done a great job through this board and the DPW and working with DOT on the western part of Route 28 and moving forward on bike ped planning and streetscapes. We want to make sure that if we extrapolate some of that design and how it might work in this area, that we reserve ourselves enough room for those corridor improvements, and we're not basically saying, well, we have to go around the building now. And that's a distinct advantage to the developer, because Mass Housing really looks for intermodal and multiple transportation access opportunities, bike ped as part of their projects. They want to get their residents in a position where they can access services and jobs without having to own a vehicle. So we just want to make sure that as we go through that, we understand that what does this side of the street look like potentially, and what does the corridor planning look like for this site? Density, so this is really a wrap-up of everything above, and it is indicating that, you know, when you look at the commercial and the residential together, how do you meet the infrastructure needs at that density? ADA accessibility, this is a comment by one of the committee members, that we really want to look at ADA accessibility or a studio unit on the first floor so that we increase our number of ADA units. And that includes kitchen and bathrooms, you know, where a person can be in the kitchen and use a wheelchair at the stove and et cetera at certain heights. So there's a lot of consideration when you're creating an ADA unit in the bathroom and the kitchen and things like that, that bedrooms. So we like to make sure we have that facilitation, you know, to make sure we have those type of units. And then really, you know, you really can't tell at this time, a lot of the specifics on these other issues, water sewer, wetlands, building, fire, and other standards, given we're really not at, they're not asking us to review what the ZBA would review, but we're requesting, as to the credit of the developer, they've already been working with a lot of departments, that they continue to do that and take into consideration all of these standards and, you know, by the time they go to development, how do we get them in sewer and void their septic system, you know? How do we work with them on those? But building, fire, and other standards, some of the things you wouldn't have waived by 40B, we just want to make sure they continue that goodwill that they've expressed to us and cooperation as we go through this. And as the board knows, really, they want to get their certification. We want to get this letter in to Mr. Busby, who's been kind enough to give this as extension based on some of the plan changes. So there are a few typos in here that some of the people reviewing said we need to correct, and I will do that, you know, so that the chair has a clean copy. But the intent of the letter is really to outline sort of a policy direction for others as we go through a more detailed review process, and not necessarily to point out, we'd rather have this door versus this window and all that other things. And these letters don't usually get into that detail. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Everybody got this letter, right? This proposed draft letter? Did anybody have any revisions to it or anything like that?
No, not for me, Mike.
Yeah?
That'll look good.
No?
And Mr. Chairman, as we move forward, what we'll do is, I've done it...
But the response, do I forget the date? It's a little while down the road.
It's the 11th, so we've got it in the letter. We, I want to really push this out by maybe when, whenever you're available to sign. I'll have it ready by Thursday if we...
Just call me, I'll come down and sign.
I mean, we can get it out by the end of this week.
Assuming that it's acceptable to the board.
Yeah, and, and that gets the developer moving, you know, through that process, but, because they're giving us more time to look at this.
It seems that these comments by the various departments are broad enough that it probably wouldn't have to be revised very much, if at all, in the event of future changes to the plan. Do you, do you see it the same way?
Right, and, and that's a good point, because the, the departments, when they do their site plan review, are very specific. They might point to a certain architectural style. This points to stay within our architectural style. We want to put the, I think, the board in position of a policy position to say, here's your guidance, but then when you want to get specifically, you know, you can refer back to this. But, you know, this is really ZBA territory, so, you know, if I were to attach all the other reviews, we're sort of wandering into a jurisdiction that the board doesn't belong. But when you look at this and you say, and, and to accredit, the town planner indicated that, you know, we have a very good foundation here to move forward, but they had written, maybe if you've seen in some of the earlier reviews, maybe five, you know, six pages of detail, consider stormwater, file this, file that. We're not, we're not looking at that here. Whatever they do for a plan, this is really applicable. So as a plan changes, you're still in a policy direction and not trying to amend this because the plan changed. So we're not saying, move the building here, move the building there. We're just saying, we'd rather see a better density and circulation and all those things.
Okay, does anybody have any comments or questions? Mark?
I don't have any comments, no.
I, I don't, I think I've been very clear. I'm, I'm not supportive of it. I think the plan, the first plan was laughable. Second one, I don't find much better. It's overburdening, it's clear and simple, overburdening, and trying to jam in a commercial use that we have no idea what it's going to be, we have no idea about parking. To me, it's just, these 40B developments are, you know, you talk about friendly, what's friendly? Shoot me in the head, shoot me in the neck. I'm not a fan, and it is what it is, we're stuck with it. The town's trying to make the best possible scenario out of this, but I just think it's unfortunate, and I think we need to make sure that we take steps in the future to avoid more of these things coming. So I'll support the letter, but I am definitely not supportive of the project.
Good, thank you. Dorcas?
I have no questions or concerns to raise. I think it's a good letter. In fact, I'd make a motion that we approve the letter.
With the attachments?
With the attachments.
Just so you know, so we don't steal thunder or credit, what happened with the letter is Bill drafted it, and then he sent it to me, and then I redlined it, I made some fairly extensive edits to it, and then it went back to him, then he said he didn't have any changes to the work that I did. So I give, you know, it's hard to get the base, the first part of the letter done when you're working with a blank piece of paper, so I really appreciate the work that built it on it. All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Mark has a second?
Yep.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So passes by a vote of four to zero with one member absent. So you just call me when it's ready.
Sure. I should have something Thursday. I've got to work on the festival thing tomorrow, the contract.
The next item, status report from the Armist housing authority. I spoke a little bit about this in response to the last letter. They've been on the agenda for the last two meetings, or at least tentatively, and then they haven't taken us up, I guess, on our, our offer. I guess they're saying they're not ready to, to meet with us, and that they sent, is the...
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I can go over the memo.
Is the RF, proposed RFP in the packet or no?
Should be in the packet.
I know I...
We have two documents, one is...
I saw it in the other materials, but online, but I don't know if it's here.
Usually do this digitally, and I'm losing sight of things by paper.
I don't have it.
I, I thought that it was too big.
No, the RP, it wasn't too big. I, I thought it should have been in there. I will make sure you get a copy of it, though, and then there's a...
I've seen it online, but I, but, but in any event, can I talk to you briefly about the RFP? That, that RFP was pretty incomplete and didn't provide any information about some of the issues that we've discussed here tonight and that Mark has discussed with protection of the water supply and making sure that the development is matched with the necessary infrastructure, that our wells are protected. Is it possible or inappropriate for, because the town has these vital interests to protect, to participate in the RFP process to address these issues?
I think just for RFP, the, just to describe the context, their RFP is for, as they claim, disposition, it is actually more like a DBO, design, build, and operate. They also have management function in it, that some of that needs to be completed more. But to the chairman's point, you can include criteria in the RFP related to water supply protection, and the advantage there is that the developers are submitting proposals, meeting that criteria before they're selected by the Housing Authority. So rather than fighting through a permitting process to include those, you're basically saying, before you even come out of the selection process, include these things in there. Now, it would be common that there's an inordinate amount of things you can do for water supply, such as, you know, less lawn fertilizers or, you know, items that would require them, less permeable surface, better drainage systems with grease and oil traps. So all those standards, we might want to look at working with the Housing Authority to incorporate. So by the time it comes out, a lot of the things at both the Health Department, because the most confusing part about this is if they use septic systems, then they need to use nitrate systems because of the DEP letter, and if they use nitrate systems, those change like the stock market in terms of the technology. So we want to be able to recommend that technology in this RP. And I think it's important that we work with the Housing Authority to put those parameters in there. The first parameter would be, what is a calculation to, on the total number of units based on the DEP septic laws, you know? And so I think it's one bedroom per 10,000 square feet of lot area, something like that effect, unless you use a nitrate system. So they did a relatively good job on their site assessment. That's the second document that they transmitted to us. I think we need to look at working with our Health and our Water Departments and planning to say, what is the actual number of bedrooms you can do here based on standards which are state law and not waivable by 40B? And then from there, I mean, you look at how to use the RP as a vehicle to protect our water supply. So proposals are coming in saying, here's what we'll do in our development to do that. And that's the best venue, because when they come out of 40B, water supply protection ordinances are local and waivable.
The reason I mention that is they're concerned, obviously, with some, at least broad concept of development on, on that land, but we're, we're the ones that are entrusted with the water, as the commissioners.
Right.
We're the ones that have the responsibility to protect the water supply. So it seems to me that we should be involved in that process.
Well, I would agree, Mr. Chairman. I think we need to insist that whatever documents they produce, without necessarily endorsing, and no one's suggesting for a minute we're endorsing a project that the town meeting has already spoken to and rejected, I think we should at least insist that the water supply interests of the town get protected to the maximum degree. And I think some of the other disclosure elements to this that the administrator had, or the assistant administrator had referenced, I think all of that information should be, as a matter of course, made available and be part of the packet that developers submit, so they're not blindsided by all these questions and concerns. If there's going to be at least a discussion of a project, it should at least be a project that at least makes a reasonable attempt to address all these other issues. But again, my, my default on this is that the last time Town Meeting spoke to development on this site, it rejected the idea of developing this site, for, for good or for ill, however you debate it. And I think we generally, most of us who serve on elective boards generally look at Town Meeting as the governing body and the final arbiter and decider, and our job is to implement the will of Town Meeting. And so as far as I'm concerned, nothing that we do should be construed as an endorsement. So I, I would agree with the comments that are being made wholeheartedly. Let me just go to another comment, Mr. Chairman, which is why I have the floor. You know, I'm, I'm once again disappointed that invited to come in and talk about this development, we're getting emails and comments and questions from citizens, and it's, and it's reasonable, you know? We've made every effort to tell folks that they really need to reach out to the Housing Authority to get their details or the details from them. to get their details, or the details from them, and try to get a date for a public forum, you know, from them. A form that could benefit the residents of the town, as well as a butters and others that have a more direct interest in what happens with this site. And just the performance on all of this has been just abysmal, you know? I mean, if, 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 if we really want to encourage organizations that are working on affordable housing to have any chance of success, they're going to have to do a better job than this.
Right.
Because this is just awful. This is a real disappointment. And, you know, certainly an argument can be made for their side, but by continuing to dodge us and avoid discussing this with us and to avoid setting up a public forum, I just think undermines any confidence in their ability to develop.
Well, I think one of the benefits, at a minimum, that could have been, perhaps gained by them coming in, would be the discussion we're having tonight about our role as water commissioners in the RFP process. But we can't, we can't even get that far if they're not willing to communicate with us. Bill, what's the process? Where do we go from here to try to get involved in that?
We have some really talented people in health planning and the water department, as you know. They've appeared before you. So we would probably look at, if you were to develop a section in the RFP for the protection of water supply, what would that look like? And, you know, so to make sure that, you know, certain minimum standards are met. You know, as I talked about, impermeable surface, use of lawn chemicals. Most important, what does a nitrate system look like? Because today it's one thing, five years from now it's something else. So within the context of timing, because when, you know, agencies go through an RFP process like this and they don't consider those things ahead of time, then the state does. And the state says, no, it's going to cost you a lot more than you thought. And because we're going to require this, 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 and this, because it's a water supply. So why not put that in RFP and have the person create a proposal that inside the pro forma takes into account what they're going to run into anyway? Because if it's not our local zoning, given a letter from DEP of June 1, they're really probably not going to tread lightly on nitrate systems and say, you know, whatever. And so we want to be able to inform the housing authority developers that, take this into consideration, because then you take it into consideration in your pro forma. Because I've seen these things come out of these RFPs, and all of a sudden the developer's surprised, oh, I didn't know I had to do that, because it's not in the RFP. You know, so, and then their pro forma changes, and they're going back to the agency saying, I can't do it for that. I didn't know I was going to build a sewer line. I didn't know I was going to build a road. And so I think it's important that they understand how important you as water commissioners feel the water supply is. And again, not looking at it as supporting development, but making sure that if it moves forward, these things are taken into consideration.
Yeah. My understanding, Mr. Chairman, is that this development is just within a few hundred feet of the well field.
I think it's 350 feet.
350 feet to the edge of, I think, your zone one.
Edge of the next zone.
And then that zone is 400 feet wide.
Zone one, yeah.
Yeah, but that's roughly the well field.
It's pretty close, yeah.
It's, you're there.
It's very close.
Right, yeah.
And it's in zone two, which, you know, thankful to Kathy to sort of outline, there is a per bedroom, square foot requirement when you're doing, working in zone two at the state level.
Right. So the assumption is, because it's in a zone two, what that means is that the development is taking place in an area where the land use contributes to the quality of the water.
Zone contribution.
Exactly. It's a zone, it's the land area that contributes and has the potential to impact adversely the water resources, the water supplies. So, and because it's so close, you would have to argue that the potential impact is, is highly likely in a negative way.
Isn't the limitation bill something like one bedroom every 10,000 square feet or something?
I think that's what, yeah.
Restrictive, Mark. Pretty restrictive.
I think that if you have a nitrate system that changes, but I'm not quite sure what the actual number is, you know? That you get...
You're talking about an INA system.
Yeah. And so, as I said earlier, I think it's important, given how those technologies fluctuate, we as a community decide, this is the one we would like you to build and make sure it's the most effective one that we can have. And, you know, DEP in their step in June 1 kind of set the standard that you've got to use the best available technology and nitrate system. So this development is going to be facing that approach as it relates to the Cape. I don't think DEP is going to say, no, forget the nitrate. They're telling everybody you need them, so. So I think that it's, you know, not that you're accepting, approving the development, you're just making sure that it moves forward.
Making sure that the water protection interests are protected.
Right. And it's also, it's a really better process when the developer is informed that if it's not the town that's going to ask it, the state's going to ask it. And the state's going to look at this from all those other standards in terms of impermeable surface, lawn fertilizer and all that. So, you know, you want to make sure that the developer is fully informed that what, I mean, I've seen these things come out, as I said, and the developer thought there was a sewer line available to them and their $250,000, you know, underwater, as it were, because it wasn't in the RFP or under sewage. So this is an opportunity, their system or their process is an opportunity for you to sort of guide it. And given, as I said, the staff we have, we'd probably be able to create a good section for them to be included in the RFP.
When can we get this notification out to them? How, what do we have to do? I mean, we're not on the agenda tonight for a vote to that effect, but...
No. But I think we want to look at the timeline it might take for staff to develop something. They have a little bit of work with their RFP. From what I see, there's a, the title of the RFP belies the, what they think is the intent, the intent is disposition, but it's also to design, build, and manage. Manage has a whole set of parameters that I'm not quite sure is completely addressed in the RFP. But I'm sure there is more work to be done, given, this is the disposition of land that's pursuant to a housing authority process. So disposition in the state of mass is 30B 16. And it requires notification, you know, through the central register, COMBIs. It's 60, 90 days just for the process before you even get the RFP done.
Any expectation that there's a requirement for public hearings?
The RFP, no, there isn't a requirement for public hearings. But it is probably the best thing to do before you release the RFP, because, as I said, I've done a few RFPs on exactly like this, on rehabilitation of an old school for housing. We had the neighbors in and say, our site plan looks like this. Our developer instructions looked like this. What are we missing, you know? And they came in and said, no work, you know, between these hours on this. You know, find a lay down area that's not my backyard, you know? So you get those kind of things when you put the RFP out there in a criteria and you have a public hearing on it, you formulate a better process. Because the developer's going to come back, you know, in a 40B process, and those people are going to be there. Why not put in the RFP and forewarn them that these are the things that we're looking at?
You know, the difficulty of the site is one thing. Lack of transparency by this particular board is another. And it's been extremely troubling. Earlier tonight, we had a comment, what was it? Subjuge. He logged it at the wrong committee.
Right.
Yeah.
Present company excluded.
No, you're right. There was, there was really an accusation, but public comments, not for that number, anyway, number one. And number two, you're right, it was misdirected. So I hope that that individual's watching this portion of the meeting. And if he, if he has, he'll know that his comments were misdirected. So, Bill, do you, do you wait until staff develops that portion of the RFP and then contact housing? Or do you let housing know upfront that, that staff, that we want to be involved and that staff is working on it?
I think informally, they'll know by virtue of the meeting that, you know, we're looking at it. And so I think that maybe communicate with them and say, we appreciate both the RFP and the site assessment. And that we'll have staff take a look at that as it relates to the protection of our water supply. And I'll talk to them about when that will come back.
In a sense of this meeting, can you go forward and do that?
Sure. I'll make sure that we return an email to the email that is referenced in your July, July 27 memo. And again, the distinct advantage of this is, these are some of the hurdles that the developer will face. So why not have them design their project within the context of some of their hurdles? And the disposition moves much faster, because the developer has a due diligence period after you select them. If they're stuck in arguments about nitrate systems, you're not getting your money. So, or you're not closing the deal. If we have this kind of information in the RFP, it's just going to move faster for whoever gets the development contract.
Is there anything we can do to, I mean, right now, they're talking about a public meeting on the 14th, maybe. We don't have a time, we don't know the specifics. But that's not even two weeks from now.
Right.
I mean, what kind of, you know, the public, there's, we know there's a large number of people in our community who have concerns about this project and want to have the opportunity to sit down, hear what's actually being proposed, and have an opportunity to ask their questions about it.
Again, and I emphasize, this is a project that was rejected at Town Meeting.
Absolutely, absolutely.
It was a Town Meeting vote that has been disregarded to reject development on the site. And again, regardless of where you come down on it...
Have you seen all the documents on this? I haven't had that opportunity yet, have you?
I've pulled together a lot of documents and information. I think one of the things that was very helpful was a timeline prepared by town staff some time ago that made specific reference to all of the Town Meeting actions with respect to this particular property going back to 1974.
Yes.
So there have been a whole host of...
Do you have a pa, a pa, on that packet?
Yeah, actually, when we were working with Mr. Holcomb, he was looking at the information. And Karen Green, the Community Development Director, did a great job. I think Mr. Forrest is referencing it, of creating chronology. But not only that, we have the minutes of certain Town Meetings and everything else. So we can try to find a...
Can you send us that packet?
Well, it's multiple files, but we'll put it on a shared folder for you to...
That would be great.
You can access it.
Because I think one of the articles at Town Meeting, April 12, 20, 20, 2012, Article 8, Article 13, was rescinding the vote from a prior Town Meeting that made the land available for housing development. And that article passed. Town Meeting.
I think I remember Elvio Rodriguez saying that at one of our recent Town Meetings.
Yeah. There were, there was another article regarding funds to arrange a purchase, but that requires two willing participants. And I think attempts were made to try to work out an arrangement, but I believe that those were unsuccessful, because the housing authority was not interested in taking any constructive action. So, again, it requires, that's why I'm saying, the record on the use of the site is important in terms of these decisions. So the Town Meeting actions, the votes, and some discussion of the disposition, particularly the April 2013, the annual Town Meeting voted to approve a petition article to rescind the May 2009 vote for the housing development. And then there was an Article 23, which appropriated over a million dollars to assist in financing the acquisition of another site for that development. Now, I don't know what's happened to those funds. I don't know if those funds are available. Oftentimes, you know, I know under the Ed Centio regime, any Town Meeting articles with money set aside that wasn't utilized relatively expeditiously usually got returned somehow. But that's a question that I would have, is, is there any money still available to that article? And what's the status of that article? It's not, it's not unusual in other towns to see if there's a vote for a million dollars. Sometimes those monies are appropriated, depending on where the monies were coming from, of course. If it was a raisin appropriate, then those monies could be sitting in...
Be out there somewhere.
They could be sitting there somewhere and might be available for accomplishing the purposes of that article, which was almost like a land exchange. So you could have a million dollars to buy land that's probably more appropriate, more suitable, more in keeping with that kind of high density development. But for whatever reason, things broke down, nothing ever happened. And I think that, you know, if I wanted to, if we wanted to speak to the frustrations of some of the residents, it's that Town Meeting spoke, Town Meeting acted. I know some of that frustration is directed towards us, but we're somewhat victims in this as well. And in many cases, the frustration really needs to be directed to the people that have basically been ignoring, not just them, but also apparently Town Meeting. You know, the governing body of the town.
It'd be great if we could have our attorney actually give us an opinion, because we've been asking for it for a long time.
So we were looking at, you know, throughout all the documents, and there are four Town Meetings. And there's a lot of documents, when Mr. Holcomb first approached us, fortunately, the Community Development Director had made a very thorough table, which I'll, that's the first thing I'll email out to you, and then we'll get the documents in a place you can find it.
How many pages are we talking?
Oh, roughly, over 100.
Really?
Between all the different Town Meeting minutes.
Over 100 pages?
Yeah, I would think so, yeah.
No, because what you're dealing with is, you're dealing with, in April of 1974, there was a Town Meeting article, the following year, another Town Meeting article. 1985, a Town Meeting article. And then 1989, a board action in terms of transferring property. There's, in this milestone, there's at least a dozen or so...
Same one that...
Yeah, there's a dozen or so actions that have been taken. And the Town Meeting act...
The transfer was by the board, the selectman?
Correct.
Yeah, the Town Meeting authorized the transfer of the land to the housing authority, thinking at the time that it would be an appropriate site for, you know, fairly large concrete housing development.
The original purpose of the taking was for a minutes' worth complex way back, and then it changed.
Yeah, the original article, yeah.
That's what I've heard. I've never seen any of the documentation.
Yeah, the original article, I have it right here, from '74. This was back when Charlie Eager was on the board, yeah.
It changed over time.
Town of, it's for the following purposes. Police Department, Fire Department, Water Department, Park Department, Town Hall, or Central Garage. All right? And I, and I will make note, it doesn't say library. Right? So if you're looking to build a library in the middle of nowhere, that's not referenced as a potential use for that site.
At least on this site.
Yeah. Right. So that's what, that's what it said. So the selectmen were authorized to make, to acquire that land. And then in a subsequent action, the selectmen were authorized to trans, make a transfer. And the other thing that you should definitely see is, and you may have already seen it in some of the material, is just the footprint of that site. It's a fairly large piece of property that a Butts Townhouse wrote. So, I mean, you could see, I mean, think of, think of all the recreational activity at Townhouse Road, right? And the lack of parking there for many events and many opportunities.
What they do is they have like a crosswalk, and the surplus parking goes in back of the senior center.
It does, it does, but I mean...
And that's the way it was designed.
Yeah, no. So there was a, it was a connection clearly with those.
Because I was chairman of the Rec Department when we did the old Townhouse development. And that was deliberate. They, they knew there was not going to, there was going to be a need for... They knew there was not going to, there was going to be a need for over-floor parking. So they just kind of did a little pavement, and there's a little path.
Oh, that's what that is.
It was right to the senior center.
Now, I've actually, and I think others on the board have as well, but I've actually gone in the neighborhood that abuts it, that road in Captain's Village. And one of the stories that I've heard from one of the residents, although I've heard from several folks, that I think is just worth being aware of is the groundwater flow. The groundwater flow in that area moves from the senior center site and that area and that land in a southeasterly direction. All right? So, on the one hand, the concern is that if you have septic waste in a developed area, that that, with the water pumping from the wells, that could be drawn into the wells. Legitimate concern. On the other hand, depending on the pumpage and that hydrological activity, it's conceivable that whatever gets dumped in the ground works its way southeast. Now, there are many people in Captain's Village who have leaky or wet basements.
A lot of people, yeah.
So think about that. So imagine, imagine living in a subdivision where you have your humidifier going nonstop, sucking water out of the basement, knowing that there's a major development going in that's going to be putting wastewater into a site that could very well be migrating in and around your basement. So you can understand why some folks, this is a very visceral and a very strongly held argument. There are people who have had health issues because of the moisture and the water and the mold and the dampness, so...
All you have to do is drive around in that development after a rainstorm to see the issues as far as water is concerned. It's amazing how it just doesn't drain.
Yeah, which is another frustration about, that one time the town did... See, this is, with our new assistant here, this isn't actually an area where you could conceive of a benement in a neighborhood funded in part through a diff or some kind of improvement district that has an impact on improving drainage. Because, I mean, there are a number of properties that are really impacted. And it's sad to watch people pumping water out of their basements into the streets, and then it just goes down the street and God knows where it ends up, probably in somebody else's basement. But there's clearly a need for some improvement there. And I think that there's a plan sitting on someone's shelf somewhere.
Drainage deteriorates, roads went more quickly because it undermines the subsurface conditions and asphalt, you know, shrink swell and all that kind of stuff, so...
So I think originally, when we looked at it, we didn't necessarily think that the drainage problems could create issues for the town and the towns' roads. We were just looking at what it might cost to put in a better storm drainage system to alleviate the flooding problems, mostly for residents. But there may be a value in revisit it. Not that we don't have a lot of other things to do, but I think it's, I think it's a reasonable proposal to revisit and look at, but with a much broader perspective, looking at the extent to which there are municipal interests that are also compromised and impacted in some way as a result of the bad drainage in there, you know? And there may be other, more creative ways to finance some of this stuff. The Rural Development Administration actually has grants that fund water and wastewater improvements in districts or towns smaller than 3,000. So it's conceivable you could have a water improvement district, or a wastewater improvement, or a storm drain improvement district that might be eligible for grant funds to underwrite a substantial portion of that. But it requires time and energy and effort to deal with it. But that's something certainly worth exploring.
Actually, if you did a 40R here, 40R returns to the town about 3,000. It's not a 40B. It's where you, the town actually creates the zoning for the affordable housing units. And the, I think the state is still returning about $3,000 per unit. On a 240-unit development that we worked with, a 40R in another community, we got a return of about $2 million from the state. Then on top of that, if you do a 40R, you can access MassWorks funds. So if you, you know, depending upon the scale of the development, 240 units leveraged a lot of interest by the state. It was about 65 units of affordable, or the big A as they're calling it. But that leveraged 1.2 million to fix an intersection nearby. The planning board was basically saying, "You're going to fix that developer." And then MassWorks likes funding housing projects, affordable housing projects. So we went after MassWorks and did more than what we really needed to do, than what the development needed. So whether drainage is in that picture. But we would need cooperation from the housing authority to sort of go through that more administrative. And then you'd have to accept the fact that development's happening, because if you create 40R, you're facilitating the development.
Okay, let's move on to agenda review. We got to do that next, and then individual items, and then any updates.
Just one item. I think you have the vote to accept special town meeting calendar.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Don't move.
You're right. No, I had pulled that out. This is a...
Don't move.
I thought, I thought we had already voted on the town meeting date of the 7th. These are just, I guess, steps leading up to that.
You have a motion to approve and...
One second?
Yep.
All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Done. 4-0, one member absent. So, I guess we're on the agenda review now, right? So the next meeting is the 15th.
Yes.
We got the annual tax classification hearing. That should be short. That's the old factor one. Recognition of volunteer service, Evelyn Beal, airport community meeting with the consultant. That should take some time, right?
Oh, yeah.
And the Mass DOT and GPI update on Route 28 project.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would recommend that we feature the Mass DOT meeting and put that up front.
Okay.
That should lead that meeting. And what I would like to encourage the administration to do is a lot of advanced, because this is a public hearing, the Mass DOT plan, right? Are they going to be taking public comments?
Usually they do that individually and their own, but if they're doing it at your meeting, then, yeah, they have a set format for their presentation, Mass DOT.
You, if we, if, what I'm saying, Mr. Chairman, I think it's worth giving some thought to doing a lot of advanced meeting publicity, that there will be an update on the Route 28 road project from Mass DOT. And we should work out an agenda. I would recommend at least giving a chance for the public to speak.
In the chamber, people.
And whatever, but Yarmouth residents should certainly be given the opportunity to say something at that meeting. But to get to build a crowd, we'll have to do some, a press release and some social media and have it sustained.
You want public input on that?
Yeah, don't you think?
Yeah.
It's fine.
What would you consider, and not that I would always recommend this, starting at 5:00, having the DOT thing, then start your meeting at 6:00? And then we can sort of get people in here. And because you'll get the airport meeting, I think you're going to draw quite a crowd, and you're going to have some anxious people waiting for the DOT meeting.
I don't know about moving the, I think if you move DOT too early, again, I think you might lose people there, too. A lot of people will have work. Some people have to go home and have dinner before the meeting. I'd be hesitant to do that. I mean, it might accommodate us, but it might defeat the purpose that marks...
Right, and to the point, when they do their hearings, they have everybody kind of sign a sign-in sheet, and it looks better to Federal Highway and all those other things that there are more people there. So, yeah, I think keeping it within the meeting is important.
How long do you think that, I mean, the presentation will be, not any public questions or...
I've worked with them on a few projects, and they're about a half an hour to 45 minutes. And they go through a canned presentation that's related to where the money comes from and sometimes and things like that. But this is a pretty extensive project, Streetscape, you know, and you've got potential takings. They don't usually talk about that in detail, but they are at 75% design, so they can talk about it. They don't, they talk about it till then. So, probably a half an hour for the presentation, but if you have comments on right away, you know, that could take some time.
Yeah, they're going to have a nice visual, too. They have a simulation.
Yeah, it's very nice.
Well, it'll take you down the newly redesigned...
So we'll try to get some publicity out. We'll try to, we'll try to, we'll put it on the agenda for the first item. And we'll do the recognition, obviously, first. Hey, you know what, though, Mark? That tax classification hearing's quick, too. That just, that just taxes residential the same as commercial.
Yeah.
The airport's at least an hour, right?
Yeah.
So why don't we do, why don't we do the recognition of the volunteer, the classification hearing? Because that's going to be 15 minutes.
And then go to Mass DOT.
Then we'll go to Mass DOT and then airport, and that should be, that should be enough.
That should do it. Yeah, I'm, yeah, I would agree.
And then we don't have a meeting on the 5th because that's the day after Labor Day. And now we're at the September 12th.
Can we pick a date for the goal setting?
That's the 19th of August.
So on the 12th, you have that move of the beach license we just...
Oh, yeah, we have that, that item carried over from tonight.
Right, continued to a date certain.
Beyond the bounds, they call it.
Right.
Yep, that's going to be on, or the 12th.
And what about the housing production plan?
She was talking about having a workshop meeting in September.
Okay.
When she, Mary, when she left. So I think we're probably a step away from having another selectmen's meeting on that. Wouldn't you say we should probably have the workshop meeting with her?
I'm not pitching a workshop meeting.
Oh, I think Dan was interested in that.
That's what Dan wants to do.
Only if there's a consensus. Otherwise, I'll sit down with Mary myself.
I think that usually these things actually have a hearing. You have a posted notice and you have like comment, you know, so it's not...
On the housing production?
Yeah, on the housing production plan. Based on the two I've gotten approved, we had hearings, so...
We should post a hearing on the plan and then vote on it.
I don't think you want to do housing too quickly, though, in view of the fact that Dan has, you know, wants to go through that. There's a lot of material there.
I think selectmen organize...
Huh?
I'll do the work ahead of time if I have to.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, if you want to align the town meeting calendar with this, on the 12th, the deadline for submission of special town meeting articles is the 12th. The town administrator usually does a great job of getting all those together. We'll see if maybe, you know, that they'll get to, whether we can get them to you in the packet to start that discussion. Because in the, on September 26th, we're looking at the final draft of the warrant articles. So we probably want to see if we can fit at least a very draft into you on the 12th, and that'd be draft town meeting articles. But I will talk to him about his intention of that. At least we might have a list and a description, you know, about what we see coming forward.
Was that, was that on the calendar for the 12th?
Yeah, the 12th is when they come into us with, into the town administrator and myself. So, you know, I'll talk to him about whether or not we want to put it on at least as a list and get your early guidance on it, so that when you do the final draft on the 26th, you know what's coming. But as I said before, town administrator Bob has done a great job on getting full warrant articles together earlier than normal, so we want to be able to keep that tradition.
Amen.
We want to have an update of our goal setting then on the 12th. I mean, we're meeting on the 19th of August.
Well, they'll, so if we're doing that, then what'll happen is we'll go over our goals and objectives and then, and then we'll probably get a document that we can discuss. Usually we, the last time we left our meeting, we had a pretty good handle on what our, what our priorities were.
I think so, yeah.
Well, that's why I'm saying, if we're meeting on the 19th of August for that, should we be putting it then on the agenda for the 12th of September?
From what I remember, it was about a month to turn around the full report to you. Do you want to do September 19th to get the goal document back to you? And then again, I'll talk to Bob about that. So I have final draft special town meeting warrant on the 26th. So we'll see how that fits in with your meetings, because I don't see a meeting on the 26th there, so...
Okay.
We are, if I may, want to interject. We're doing a separate CIP cycle for fall town meetings, because last year was our first foray into catching the fall town meeting articles. Because as we're going through the process, they were heading to town meeting. So August 7th is when we anticipate we're going to see our first CIPs go into the portal. They go to Bob, the town administrator. He then sends them to CBC. So we're going to be working with the capital budget committee to do a very short round. So by the time you go to town meeting, they'll have seen the fall ones. Then they start on the spring ones. Because it was very confusing last year when we bundled them together. You know, which one is this on? Is this spring or fall? And so now we're going to have fall town meeting, capital, and it'll be sort of a report that shows fall town meeting and then spring. So that by the time we go to fall town meeting, the capital budget committee will have reviewed the items that are in fall town meeting. In the past, it was a cursory review because they were coming in at the same time the capital budget committee was starting. So we're going to try to start earlier this year.
Is there a reason why we break them up?
Well, it's only because that if you combine them, you have to do the whole, I mean, you have to do the entire list. And spring ones aren't really ready for a fall discussion. So we want to make sure that...
Why do we do the fall ones?
Well, we do the fall ones, I think next year we might look at, they're going to submit the fall ones in the regular cycle, but earlier. We might start the cycle earlier. The difficulty is, is, you know, when you're, when we combined them last year, we were trying to figure out which one is this in. And we want to make sure that we have an understanding of the fall town meeting articles as it relates to the plan. Then because the department should get more time to look at those bigger projects for the spring, they submit them later. Next year, we're going to try to combine them so that they're submitting the whole package earlier. And when you look at this, when we look at this spring town meeting submittals, we might ask them to submit for the fall also. So we're in a transition year. Last year, because we had the portal, people can just go right in any time in a year and put their items in. So we were having them put them in. And in the past, you weren't seeing fall town meeting articles. They were going to, and we had to backpedal to put them in the plan. Now we're going to, you know, review them and then go to the spring. But we might also ask, we want to give the fall ones because it's the same fiscal year as the spring. That's what difficulty is. So you'll, you might see a fall review, a spring, and a next fall review. So then the year after that, the spring and the fall are in it. And it's important to understand the difference is, the spring town meeting, you know, it's part of the budget. It's part of that whole cycle. The fall town meeting, it's usually, you know, you didn't put it in the budget. So there's others, most of those things are other sources of funding, so... But we do want to make sure we have that separation, because when you would look at the spreadsheets, you're saying, was that spring or fall we did that? And now there's a coding system that'll say FTM and then the fiscal year. So we're aligning it, and our consultant does another great job of updating it. What I'll do someday is bring in the portal and show you. Right now, they submit to the town administrator, which is part of your charter. And then he recommends, and automatically the CBC can see them, whatever he recommends, and then they move forward. But I just want to tell you that we're trying to align all our CIP items within the context of that. And FinCom is working on an annual schedule that would try to align with all this also. Because the unique thing about a town government, we do the same thing every year, but we act as if sometimes if it's all new. So... So.
So does anybody have anything else on the agenda review?
Nope.
No? Okay. Do you have any updates for us? Oh, individual items. Mark?
I don't have any.
Ken?
No, thank you.
Dorcas?
No.
I'll pass as well. So now we're, any updates from you, Bill?
No, only as in my capacity, is working with the Capital Budget Committee and the Fin, Finance Committee. They are wanting to align their two schedules, so that, you know, we have a sequence of meetings where capital budget finishes, FinCom picks up, they finish their recommendations. And really, the board is the one that sets that first domino when you give your budget message. So what we want to do is, we don't want to be in a position where, as the warrant is being amended, we're setting up special meetings the day before to make sure it's, we're voting on the same document. So we're aligning with your meetings, so the Wednesday before you have a final meeting to vote on the warrant, we're gonna make sure there's a FinCom meeting there, because it's usually every other, you know, it's the second and fourth or something like that. We're gonna change the schedule, so it's very strategic. And I think because last year, sometimes as the warrant was changing, we were setting FinCom meetings the day before your meeting to make sure we voted on the same document you did. And I think that this year, we'll look at the Wednesday before you have final votes, move on on it. And then, capital budget with fall. So eventually, we get into a calendar which everybody understands the sequence of both town meetings, the budgets, the capital, everything else. So we're gonna start with FinCom and capital budget, and then come to the board and say, how does, how would you prefer to move forward on these things?
Do you have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
For adjourn?
Thank you.